All right, everyone. Thanks for joining. We will get started now. Thank you for joining the May 4th Lewisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. Because of COVID-19, our meeting's being held electronically and is being recorded. If you'd like to request permission to speak during public comment periods, an attendee can raise their hand by clicking the raise hand button that you'll find at the bottom of your screen. Attendees who are calling in can dial *9 on your phone and we'll see a raised hand appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and our clerk unmute you, you'll need to state your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you'd like to speak on another topic, you'll need to raise your hand again. This evening, we're using closed captioning and we will be going forward from this point on so that folks have an easier time following with the meeting. If you find it distracting, you can turn off the subtitles in your Zoom panel at the bottom of the screen. You'll see a button on the far right that says Live CC and you can click it and go ahead and click hide subtitle if that's distracting to you and if it helps you hear better and follow along, that's fantastic too. Thank you for following these directions and helping us to maintain meeting decorum. City Clerk Mith, could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Finkie?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Lipton?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our approval of the agenda. Do I have any comments on rearranging the agenda? Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to move Item E, Discussion Direction, South Boulder Road and Atgrade Crossing Project below 7A because I think it'll inform the discussion we'll have for 7B, which is the potential transportation tax ballot issue.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of the motion? And Councilmember Finkie will get to consent agenda on Item 4, just, and that's where we'll handle if we want to take things off consent agenda, but is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. And that takes us to our public comment on items that are on our, that are not on our agenda tonight, or items that happen to be on our consent agenda. If there are any members of the public that would care to comment on items that are not on our agenda, or items that are on our consent agenda, please raise your hand at this time. All right, seeing none, that takes us to our consent agenda this evening. Is there any discussion of the consent agenda? Councilmember Finkie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to remove the Older Americans Month proclamation from consent and have an actual discussion about it, have it read.
Thank you. So we will move the Item C from the consent agenda. It's our practice to enter, if anyone wants to remove something from consent agenda for discussion, that we entertain it. And so we'll move Item C on the consent agenda right after Item B on the normal agenda. So we'll go C Consent and then C Normal Agenda. Any other discussion of the consent agenda? Could I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. And that takes us to our council informational comments this evening on pertinent items that are not on our agenda. Any council comments this evening from folks? All right, seeing none, that takes our city manager's report. City Manager Balser.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to ask Megan Pierce, Economic Vitality Director, to give a few updates and then Public Works Director Kurt Koar to give a couple of updates as well, so I'll...
Thank you. You got cut off on the end, but I think you were handing it over to Director Pierce.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Balser. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just going to provide two quick updates. The first on our outdoor dining program. So the temporary closure of Main Street started last week on the 26th. We were able to put the setup in place without disrupting the existing seating areas. And then those that didn't already have seating areas over the winter, those were all set up by Friday, so people were able to have service over the weekend. Additionally, we have a few participants on Front Street and those patios were put in place yesterday. Similar to last year, we'll keep an eye on how the setup works and functions and will likely need to make a few tweaks as necessary as things go along. And please keep in mind, the program is planned to be in place through November 1st. And two, main two outstanding items for us to work on related to the closure involve deploying some signage and then the floral program, which will give it a nice vibrancy to the area as well. Second brief update is on our Economic Vitality Strategic Plan. This item is reviewed each month by the Economic Vitality Committee and the committee has been assisting staff in developing what's going to be a quarterly council update on the strategic plan. The quarterly update will include a high-level scorecard showing the individual product status, as well as narrative that'll help keep council apprised or apprised of any additions or revisions. And briefly, you know, business attention and attraction are really core economic vitality functions that we work on routinely, but both are also called out as specific strategies and actions in the strategic plan and we have several of those initiatives planned for later in 2021. I'm happy to answer any questions on those items.
Thank you, Director Pierce. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Director Pierce. I just want to make sure it sounds like that. We're going to get an update on the strategic plan, the Economic Vitality Strategic Plan in July. That's my understanding based on the advanced agenda. And I wanted to make sure that that particular item included, when you talked about business retention and attraction, and I wanted to make sure that there was specific attention paid in that presentation to the attraction of businesses or the vacant vacant buildings issue that we have now.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Director Pierce?
Sure. So the, the specific initiatives that you're referencing actually don't start until later in 2021, so we are planning to do the Q2 update with the scorecard and the narrative on July 13th. That's correct, from the advanced agenda, but at this time, I wouldn't anticipate there would be any updates on those specific initiatives because they're not in process at this time.
Okay, that, that's a little concerning to me, to be honest with you, Director Pierce, that we're not that the, we're not taking active steps to try to fill vacant properties. So I would hope that we can talk about that in, in either that meeting or in a, in a, in a subsequent meeting. It's, it's concerning to me that I think one of the biggest economic vitality issues that we have in, in Lewisville is this vacant properties issue. And it doesn't seem, doesn't sound like that's in flight right now.
Thank you for that feedback, Councilmember Brown. And just, and I'm not trying to cut off the discussion, but as this isn't on the agenda, I think you've appropriately identified, we need to have this conversation on a future agenda. And so thank you for identifying for that for us. And I think that ends Director Pierce's update. Is that correct, Director Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And so we will add that, we talked about adding that to advanced agenda last meeting, and so we will get that on an advanced agenda. And thank you for that reminder, Councilmember Brown. And that brings us, I believe, to Public Works Director Coar's, Public Works Director Coar's update on the Railroad Quiet Crossings.
Yes, update on the quiet zones and then also an update on the Windy Gap firming project. So starting with quiet zones, there's two pieces of work that will take place across five intersections at baseline, South Boulder Road, Pine, Griffith, and Dillon Road. Four of those locations are in Lewisville, the fifth is in Lafayette. The four locations, all five locations have concrete work that a city concrete contractor will be completing. Our contractor has completed their approval process through the railroad. And so that concrete work for the city portions will begin in the next week or two and go through early to mid-June. And so that'll complete our portions of quiet zone. The railroad still has to do their own work for each of these quiet zone locations. We have issued a full notice to proceed for the railroad to do their pieces for South Boulder Road and Dillon Road. It's anticipated that, and they have ordered their equipment and materials for those locations. It's anticipated their work will be done by August for completion. Pine and Griffith have partial notice to proceeds for the railroad and we're waiting on some PUC approval for final plan sets on those locations. And once we get that PUC approval, they'll have a full notice to proceed on Pine and Griffith to order their materials and equipment and complete their work. So that one will probably be a few months behind the August completion of South Boulder Road and Dillon. So that's the quiet zone update. Any questions around that or information that maybe I didn't provide you were curious about?
Thank you for that update. We all can't wait to see pictures of the concrete going in.
Will do. As long, as soon as we have some action to show, we will share pictures. On the Windy Gap firming project, that project is finalizing its record of decision. It had been delayed through appeals process through opposers. There has been a settlement reached, so that project is now accelerating towards construction with a target August date for a notice to proceed for full construction of the reservoir for that project. Smaller permitting and pre-construction activities are beginning and they're working with the contractor to do contract extensions to get to August and start that project. So that'll bring up before the Utility Committee next Tuesday, discussion around the city's anticipated participation in group financing. The consortium is planning on getting a rating in June and then selling bonds in July to work towards that August notice to proceed. So the settlement costs and the current construction costs fall within current estimates we were using in our rate models, so we don't anticipate any impacts to our long-term rate forecasts. And like I said, we will be reviewing with the Utility Committee in more detail next Tuesday.
Thank you very much for that update. Thank you, City Manager Balser, for the updates this evening. And that takes us to our first item of regular business, which is appointments to the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Task Force. We'll have a presentation this evening from Anthony Graves, who is our consultant, who has helped us through the process. Anthony, so wonderful to see you. And I will ask you to take it away when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Stolzmann, and good evening, members of the Lewisville City Council. I'm just going to try to share my screen here very quickly and we will get underway. Just checking in. Give me a sec here. Can you all see the screen okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, it's a pleasure to be here. We are really honored to be selected to be your partner to advance equity, diversity, and inclusion work here in the city of Lewisville. And it's really a remarkable thing to see the outpouring of community support in Lewisville to really advance this initiative. You should all be very proud of your community and the embarrassment of riches that are coming forward to advance this equity agenda. So this evening, we're just going to cover a few quick things. We'll give you quick introductions. I'll introduce my partner, who I think will be joining us a bit late this evening. We'll chat a little bit about the task force objectives, as we understand them, as set by council. We'll talk a little bit about the process framework, the demographics of the Lewisville community, and the philosophy for selection. Then we'll talk about the goals of that selection process, how it unfolded, and then give you a quick overview of the candidate pool and then ultimately the individuals that we're putting forward for your consideration for the task force. So a little bit about the team. Again, my name is Anthony Graves. I'm the Principal of Graves Civic Solutions. I have over 20 years of experience with public engagement strategy. And as Mayor Stolzmann knows, I spent the last seven years as an executive in Denver City Government as mayoral appointee with various functions, with external engagement and regional affairs. But I spent several years supporting the mayor's Race and Social Justice Initiative, an initiative that was actually rolled out before the tragic murder of George Floyd. And so Denver was pretty far ahead in terms of really having tough conversations and doing mandatory training for all of the executive staff. So we were actually trained through the Government Alliance on Racial Equity and other facilitators to get trained up in the work. And then I started taking on additional projects, including rolling out a very similar initiative across the Economic Development Agency than informed things across Denver's city government. My partner Emily Shamsedine is the Principal of ESD Consulting. And she too has an arsenal of really remarkable experiences, primarily in the nonprofit space, working on race and social justice issues, as well as other social impact issues, including like HIV/AIDS, education, and other elements for underserved communities. And again, Emily, I think will join us in just a little while as she's wrapping up another engagement. So the objective that you set as members of the Lewisville City Council were to provide advisory recommendations to the council with respect to community issues affecting Black, Indigenous, and people of color. And after speaking with city management and the councilors assigned to this task force, we broadened it to what we're calling Race Forward Plus to say, you know, this is focused on BIPOC experience, but really supportive of other marginalized communities. And we'll talk more about that. So let me lay out for you the process framework and philosophy for getting into this very important work that's been set out by you, the members of city council. First, we took time to really look at the tone and tenor of the objectives that you set out and really confer with city management about the strategy for realizing those objectives, given the demographic makeup of your community and its history. And so after doing that, we really agreed that to meet those objectives set by you, the Lewisville City Council, the task force would be Race Forward Plus. That is to say, you said you really want to focus on the experience of Black, Indigenous, and people of color. And the genesis of much of this engagement was after the the tragic death of George Floyd, which really started a national dialogue, a continuation, I think, of our nation's civil rights movement. And so this task force will be focused on racial equity, but again, supportive of other marginalized communities because there's a lot of synergy in these frameworks for creating a more equitable, diverse, and inclusive community. So the next thing we did was to really study what your community looks like today. And so we went to all of the US Census data and really tried to figure out what a snapshot of Lewisville looked like. And then we had to cross-reference that with the objectives that you set to see whether or not we would really have the candidate pool required to deliver on your requirements. Finally, after reviewing the demographics, which we'll cover with you in just a few minutes, we set goals around the candidate pool that we received and really thought about how to curate a list of finalists for interview that had strong BIPOC representation that captured lived experience, that is, experience that really tells the story of marginalized communities, individuals that have potentially lived through discrimination, inequities. And then we also looked more broadly to ensure that we had a cross-section of voices from your community. We looked by race, gender, sexual orientation, age, residency. We thought through the renter and homeowner balance, where we had that information. We looked at individuals who may have disabilities, as well as varied levels of education. And then perhaps, very important, training or firsthand experience with EDI work. The timeframe that the council has set to deliver recommendations and hear from the community is fairly aggressive going through November. So having a baseline of information about EDI to serve the objectives that city council set out, we find is very helpful. So with that, let me talk to you a little bit about the demographic profile of the community based on US Census data. So as you may know, your community is actually 7% Latinx and it also reflects 7% of your employee workforce. So members from the Latinx diaspora constitute the largest ethnic minority in the city of Lewisville. Second is the Asian American Pacific Islander community, or AAPI community, at 5% of your population and representing roughly 2% of your employee workforce. So they are the second largest group of ethnic minorities within the BIPOC population. Third is the African American community at 0.7% of Lewis population, Lewisville population, but representing 2% of your employee workforce. And then the fourth is the American Indian or Indigenous population with 0.3%, but representing 1% of your employee workforce. Then per the census, there are 89.6% of your population who identify as white. And then the next two categories, I think, are very interesting, especially as you think through creating a balanced EDI task force that is also representative of your, your demographic makeup. So 9.7% of your population is identified as foreign-born in this, in the census, therefore immigrating to the United States from other countries around the world. And then with gender balance in mind, women have a slight edge with 50.9% of the Lewisville population being female. And then, of course, the rest is male or gender fluid. So 24% of your population is under 18 years of age. And so based on the guidance of the Lewisville City Council and the candidate pool, we tried very hard to think through how we might capture that. And then 13.9% are proud seniors, right? As we think about Colorado, what we have many people affectionately call as the Silver Tsunami, right? We have sort of the Baby Boomer generation and then Millennials and Gen Xers, right, that are growing in equal measure. And so we wanted to make sure that we were thoughtful about that representation on the task force. So let me pause for a moment. I don't have the ability to see, I think, everybody here, but I just wanted to ask if my partner Emily Shamsedine has joined me, and if not, I'll continue on.
Emily here.
Okay, great.
Welcome, Emily.
Well, with that, I am going to turn it over to my partner, Emily Shamsedine.
Thanks, Anthony. Good evening, councilors. Mayor, thanks for having me. I'm sorry that I am a little late because I had a prior commitment. But I know that Anthony has already reviewed for you all the framework and the philosophy that we used as part of this selection process. And so now I want to talk a little bit more about what we were looking for when we were in fact reviewing all of the really incredible applications. So one, as Anthony just went through all of the demographic makeup of, of your city, it was really important to us that the committee has, is representative particularly of the BIPOC communities that Anthony just listed. So we really looked at the demographic makeup, both by gender and race. We also, obviously, to the objective of the task force, really were very very thoughtful about making sure that BIPOC voices were very much present in order to meet the objectives of the task force. In addition to that, we were also mindful of looking at a cross-section, right, of residents and non-residents, renters and homeowners, business owners, young people and seniors. So all of that was a part of kind of how we were thinking about the makeup of the committee. The other things that were really important to us were that we were really looking for members that have a deep and diverse connection to community, particularly to those communities that are underrepresented in Lewisville. And we also really thought that it was important to have folks that have some experience or some working knowledge around diversity, equity, and inclusion in order to move this forward. And the last thing that we really were mindful of is what other community connections did folks have, particularly looking at systems? So are there any systems connections that could be made, whether that was schools, libraries, criminal justice system, what have you? So we were trying very hard to, in a process that quite frankly is a mix of art and science, we wanted to be really clear and really transparent about what it was that we were looking for in the task force members. Do I have to clue next slide? Thank you. Okay, so I'm sure that you probably are aware, but we had 55 applications to the task force, which I don't know about you, but we were blown away not just by the number of applications that we had, but honestly, by the quality, by the depth of commitment and experience that we saw in these applications. It was, it was actually a really kind of beautiful process to go through. It was also a very tough process because after we looked through all 55, we had to then narrow it down. So from 55, we narrowed it down to 15 finalists who we selected for interviews. And so the interview panel consisted of the consulting team, so Anthony and myself, as well as Counselor Lay, Counselor Brown, Deputy City Manager Megan Davis, and City Manager Heather Basler. We spent, I think it was a total of, I don't know, in and out of about two, three days interviewing some incredible, incredible folks. And after we did that, which, as a, as a side, I will just say that after every interview and every day of interviews, the energy in the room was remarkable because we were just all so impressed. We were so impressed by the applicants. So once we did the 15 interviews, we went through then another really rigorous process of then determining who the 11 proposed slate of folks would be. And so we went from 55 to 15 and then we are thrilled to present to you tonight the slate of 11. And I will hand it back to Anthony.
Anthony, you're on mute. You may know that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, sometimes those buttons stick, don't they, on Zoom? It would not be a Zoom party if someone was not speaking while on mute.
Exactly.
So, so thank you, Emily. That was a wonderful overview of our process at a high level. Now I just wanted to take some time to take you through your candidate pool, so you can see the adjustments that we made as a group to ultimately give you the 15 finalists for interview and the 11 proposed folks for the slate for council's consideration and action this evening. So we want you to point, we want to point out to you that this snapshot of the demographic information is just based on what was disclosed by candidates. So this is not 100% representative or accurate, right? Because it's just based on what was voluntarily provided by members who applied. And so not everyone opted in to disclose their gender identity, their, their racial identity, whether they were a resident or homeowner. But for those who were able to provide information, we wanted to at least present that to you at a high level, so you get a sense of who raised their hands. And I wanted to emphasize as well that you have just an incredibly committed constituency that wants to move this forward. It made the job very difficult for everyone involved. So with that, 15% of your candidate pool was Latinx. 11% was AAPI or Asian American Pacific Islander. 16% identified as African American. You did not have any representation from Indigenous or the American Indian community. 51% of your candidate pool or 28 candidates identified as white. You see that female representation was 58%, male 38%. Other transgender residents, you can see these different categories for more gender fluid identities represented as well, right? We had good representation. Non-residents, homeowners, renters, but the, the number of residents clearly, right? So you really have a representative sample of individuals that live in the Lewisville community. I want to skip to the last bar here for racial equity training or lived experience. To clarify, this represents individuals who have had formal education, training, or experience serving on comparable task forces, right, pertaining to equity, diversity, and inclusion work and/or someone who really had strong and identifiable lived experience, right? They came up in a marginalized community and really have experience that can inform this work. So please take a mental snapshot of that and then watch the bars change. So now on the second slide, you see that we've narrowed from 55 to 15 and we have really leveled out the BIPOC in white communities to make sure that we have a balanced and representative sample to narrow it down to 11 individuals after the community. And these are not arbitrary choices, right? These individuals are selected... And these are not arbitrary choices, right? These individuals are selected based on their understanding of EDI. Their experience or education and also trying to ensure that we have a balanced slate of candidates across all categories. But where it really gets remarkable is if you look at that last bar again. The racial equity experience in the smaller group begins to jump, right? So at first it was sixty nine percent of the total candidate pool. But by the time we narrowed it down to fifteen, eighty six percent. Of the individuals that we selected for interview, or rather, all of the individuals that we selected for interview. Eighty six percent of them had formal training, education, experience or strong lived experience that was disclosed. In the applications. And so Emily and I feel very confident. In the ability for any of these individuals to walk in. And really provide so much value. And clearly, anybody in the fifty five would have provided a unique and valuable perspective. But the fifteen individuals that we selected for interview, we felt had particularly rich experience. And so finally. Here is a snapshot of the demographic makeup for the eleven individuals. On this evening's proposed candidate slate. So you see that it is twenty seven percent Latinx or three members, thirty percent, thirty six percent AAPI, Asian American Pacific Islander. And then twenty seven percent African American. Eighteen percent white. And then fifty five percent female, thirty six percent male, eighteen percent non binary gender identity. Eighteen percent who identified as LGBTQIA plus. Now as a reminder, we did not design the application. In the various categories that the council and staff created. So this just really reflects the categories that were outlined in the application that was already administered when we came into the project. You have a pretty strong base of business owners and employees. I skipped over renters, but not very many people disclosed whether they were or were not renters. But at least we feel at least that voice is represented here. And and then going to the final category. Of racial equity and clearly disability as representation or nine percent, the immigrant experience twenty seven percent when we talked about. The number of individuals that have moved here or migrated from other countries around the world in your community for the US Census. All of this is represented here. But then when we skip to racial equity experience, now one hundred percent. Of the eleven individuals who have been selected and are proposed to you this evening for the slate. For the EDI task force has had either formal education, training, practical experience in EDI. Or has had a very rich lived experience as a member of a marginalized community. And with that, I'll turn it back to Emily to share the names.
Thanks, Anthony. So I am happy to read off to you all the proposed slate. For the Louisville Equity Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. So we have Stephanie Barr, Nancy Commons. Yannick Duke, Francisco Estevez, Jojo Fulmar, Grace Gee. Hazlina Hashim, Devonon Hines, Ronald Reeves, Leanne Torada and Lu Yu. Anthony? You want to wrap this up?
Yes, I'm trying. I apologize again. That that bar keeps sticking here. Whenever I press the buttons, I'm trying to to change this over here. Very good. Here we go. And so with that, first, let let us on behalf of the selection panel. Thank every member of the community that has raised their hand to dignify this work. We we wanted to remind everyone that this is a small task force that just has one platform. To advance this important dialogue, but all of you out in the community play an important role in being upstanders. Right? And using using the the channels that you have at your disposal. To advocate for racial justice and equity. And so we just want to thank you so much for participating in the selection process. So with that, should council move forward with the eleven individuals on the slate this evening? Here are the next steps. First, the EDI task force will convene once a month through November twenty twenty one. And our first meeting is slated to be held on Thursday, May twentieth at nine o'clock AM. These will be public meetings and we will be working with city management. To devise our kind of framework for holding those meetings with the task force. Third, the EDI task force will set topics for focus groups. That Emily and I will facilitate on the BIPOC experience. And explore challenges of other marginalized communities in Louisville. So this task force is really the guiding. Brain trust, if you will, to help us determine which issues in the community. We need to go and research, right, to really figure out what the BIPOC experience looks like and where there's room for improvement. And then once they help us to set the topics for focus groups for deeper exploration with your constituents. Then they are going to go through all of that information. And then based on your mandate, they are going to prioritize. You know, three or four, four or five areas where they recommend that the Louisville City Council take action. Perhaps to create policy and or expand programming to create a more equitable, diverse and inclusive community. And so with that, Mayor Stolzmann, I'd like to turn it back to you and see if maybe. A councilor's lay or Brown might want to add some thoughts as members on this committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Graves. And to both Anthony and Emily, thank you so much for the fantastic presentation and all your work you've put in so far. And to all the community members who have engaged to this point, we will need you all to keep engaging. I mean, this is a community-wide discussion and and we do need everyone to stay at the table and to stay participating. So thank you for your work so far and we're not done yet. So thank you so much. And I will turn it over to council members Brown and Lay to just see if they have any additional comments for their work to to date. Councilmember Brown or Lay?
Yeah. Sorry.
That's a member Brown, sorry.
No, I'll defer to.
Councilmember Lay.
Thanks. Just a couple of points. First of all, I think that we have been enormously blessed in the community. By citizens who came forward. After we as a council. Put out the call. And I cannot. Underestimate how important that is and how rich. A crop of people we had to choose from. It made it very difficult. Second. We have had an extraordinary group of. Staff who've helped with this work and and my fellow council member, both Kyle Brown and. Both before him, council member Dickinson, who started. Helping, you know, last summer when we started doing the planning for. The community conversations. And I really appreciate that. But I I've got to tell you that that the two consultants that we have. Emily and Anthony have been. Astonishingly good. We could never have done this. In a wise and. Methodical and thoughtful way without their. Guidance and help and insight and experience and expertise in all of this. And I I really want to. Express my appreciation to them for how they've helped us in all of this. And I'm really looking forward to getting the input of the task force. I think you've got. In the task force members, some of whom, as I believe, at least. Nancy Ronald and Stephanie, maybe I just see Stephanie is first name. Are we are attending the meeting quietly. But I, they among others are really going to make this an extraordinary effort. I think. The one thing that I'll say and then I can. Pass to to council member Brown is that this is a kind of effort. Which is a leap of faith for all of us as community members, no matter what the community is. Because what you're doing is really reaching out. And. And asking people to. Support, criticize, offer some suggestions. And their analysis and their observations may change us. And they may change our point of view. They already have deeply affected me in the course of this selection process. To think so much differently. I mean, I the our our consultants have helped us to do that too, but the people we've interviewed. Have enormous insight and I am, but we will remain open, I think. In a few months, we'll we'll get some results back at the end of the year, I hope, and. And it'll be great. So anyway, that those are the things that I wanted to say about it, but I do want to say thank you to the community and and. We will be needing the community all the way through. These are public meetings and it's, we want people to be. Involved.
Thanks, Councilmember Lay. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Councilmember Lay. You know, I I I just want to say a few things. Which I I really appreciate being involved in this process on a personal level. It has been extremely, extremely. Inspiring to be a part of this, to see the, not only the interest and the expertise. But the real passion that people have for this for this issue and for making Louisville better. And I I want to just thank everyone who applied. And and went through the process with us because it is a really, it is. I I concur with our consultants and just say that, you know, we have such amazing talent. In Louisville and a lot of people who I think. Maybe haven't been involved traditionally in some of this, you know, city task forces and and the business of the city. And have stepped up and have found time out of their very busy schedules. So I know that it's. You know, it's been really inspiring to see that and also to see. How deeply affected many of the folks who are on this committee. Or who were recommending to be on this committee have been, you know, throughout their lives. And without sort of reliving specific moments, I mean, you can tell how. How passionate they are because it has affected them personally. So I just, I appreciate everyone who applied. I appreciate and I hope that that everyone will stay involved. The task force is just one component of this. You know, the the focus groups and the public participation that will continue throughout the year are going to be a big part of that. So I would encourage everybody. To continue to to stay engaged in this work because we really need everybody, so. With that, I just want to say thanks to our to our consultants and everyone else.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And so with that, we'll take it to public comment and then come back over to council comments and we'll start with council member Dickinson when we get back over for that. So at this time, if there are any members of the public with that would like to comment on this agenda item or provide any feedback, this would be the time to do so. So again, you can raise your hand by clicking the raise hand feature that you'll find at the bottom of the screen. Or if you've dialed in by phone, you'll dial star nine. And if you're on channel eight, you'll see that phone number popping up at the bottom of the screen now. All right, not seeing any public comment. That brings us back over to council questions, comments and motions. Councilmember Dickinson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You know, I would certainly. Move to approve the appointment to the Equity Diversity Inclusion Task Force.
And so we'll just one second and I'll see if you get a second and then we'll come back to you to speak to the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, I just, I really, I want to thank staff. Heather, Megan and and the rest of staff that helped out with this and council members Brown and Lay, thank you so much for all your hard work. I know that you put a lot of. Time and effort into this and Anthony and Emily, thank you so much for joining our community and being part of our community. And helping us work through what is a, you know, long overdue, important topic. And something that is going to, you know, I think none of us, I I hope none of us believe we're going to have a solution in the next three months. That's not how this works, right? But but laying some groundwork for how we. Move forward as a community and how we address these issues and how, as Councilmember Brown just said, you know. How we laid the groundwork to have these conversations for years, for decades to to instill this in in how we operate as a community. And how we communicate as a community, council and beyond, right? Just bringing us bringing us together as a community. I think this is. A it's a huge moment. In in the history of Louisville to be at this at this stage of creating, you know, this task force and and. Having professionals come and help us. Navigate what is a really complicated. Moment in in time and and topic in our in our society. So thank you so much for. Again, jo- joining our community and helping us move forward. And I just, I welcome you and thank you.
Thank you for those great remarks and the motion, Councilmember Dickinson. Any other comments this evening on this agenda item? Questions, comments, discussion of the motion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. That takes us to our next agenda item this evening. And so that will be actually agenda item E. In your packet and that's the discussion direction of the South Boulder Road at grade crossing project. We'll have a staff presentation on this from our public works director Kurt Coward. Kurt, take it away.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just getting a screen share set up here. Can everybody see a mouse moving around and a diagram on the screen?
Yes, sir.
Great. So this project overall is in design and we're starting to work towards final design. And so this is an update for council. For what the designs look like and what will be installed at these locations. Just some heads up on things that we think could be sensitive in the community. As a refresher, this is about a one point three million dollar total project. A million of that is tip funding. And so overall, most of these improvements are paid for by other people. There's five locations Eisenhower Drive and South Boulder Road via Appia, Garfield Avenue, Centennial Drive and Main Street. Two of those locations also coincide with areas that we'll be looking at for underpasses for the next agenda item. What I would say overall is the at grade improvements are independent of the underpasses. There's not really any overlap there. There's only one spot on Via Appia where there's possible overlap and. And some of the things that we're looking at and that overlap is about ten to twenty thousand dollars worth of work on this project. So. In the overall scheme of the big picture, the projects are really independent, I would say. But we can talk through any details at each location as you may choose. So I'll just start at Main Street and I'm going to work our way west. So at Main Street, what we're doing. Is we are tightening up a curb radius and putting in directional ramps. This slows down the right turning traffic, which is where is the biggest risk to pedestrians right here. And then in addition, there's safety improvements that will be happening at the traffic signal. So at Main Street, right now it is a protected permissive left turn. So from the, if you're heading west. And you want to turn left on the Main Street, the traffic signal phase for that will give you a protected green arrow. And then you'll get an arrow that's permissive, which you're not protected, but you can turn. And due to the oncoming traffic volumes and some of the crash statistics that are seen along the corridor. That'll be moving to a protected turn only. And so with that, we'll need to create more turn storage for those queues. And so what we'll be doing is lengthening the median to the east. And that will cut off some left turn movement out of this south driveway and out of this north driveway out of Christopher Plaza. We did take some traffic counts last August for one day and these. This these movements that are being cut off on that day affected maybe five cars. But those left turn movements with the increase in traffic that we will see over the long term. Are becoming more and more risky. And so we're eliminating those from a safety aspect. So again, we are creating the protected left turn, creating more storage. And then taking away the left turn movements that are risky. And also with Christopher Plaza, we'll be looking at working to create a right in, a right in, right out situation with them. We have yet to talk to any property owners in this area. We have yet to talk to any property owners in this area. We wanted to talk with city council first. Just let you know what we are, what had applied for, what's being designed. And after this conversation, we will go talk with all the impacted property owners as well.
Director Coward, if we could take questions on the slides as we go through, if that's all right, so that we don't have to come back at the end.
Yeah, you just took the words out of my mouth. I was going to say, that's all I have for Main Street and I'm happy to answer any questions you have on Main Street.
Um, great. So I'll start off and just ask, could you just describe a little bit about the quiet crossing and how that will impact this graphic as well?
Um, the quiet zones for Main Street area, uh, really involved this installation of the median right here. And then we have quad gates, so you have a gate on the enter, and entering and exiting the crossing on all four sides. So, I mean, there's not going to be a substantial difference you'll see for the quiet zones, other than really, I think, the quad gates. And that may have a little bit of configuration on concrete down here.
Thank you. And so, um, over on the far east side of your diagram, um, it looks like by extending this turn pocket, we're eliminating the ability for people to make U-turns. Is that what you're telling us?
That also eliminates the ability for people to make a U-turn as well.
And so it essentially makes it so that you can't get into either the apartments that are in the Christopher Plaza Center or into Steel Ranch, if you're coming eastbound from Boulder. Is that right?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on this slide or comments? Councilmember Lipton.
Thank you, Kurt. I just have one question. I understand the independence of the various projects for this Main Street crossing, but in terms of timing, would we do this all together? Take advantage of mobilization or would we do this in advance of, uh, the possible underpass?
Uh, right now, we're shooting for fall, late summer, fall construction on all these. So, um, no, we would not. The underpass construction, I mean, best, best case is one to two years out.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Director Coward. And just, sorry, I'm just slowly thinking about my question and your answer. Is, so I completely understand. You said there's a safety issue with the left turns and that's why we need to extend the lane and the quad crossing and every, I under, I understood everything you said. Is there any way? I mean, the answer is likely no, but is there any way to address the access issues that this creates with getting into Christopher Plaza and Steel Ranch?
I don't, I'm going to say yes. Separate from this conversation, we've received or we're working through receiving RFPs from multiple traffic consultants. I think in general, from Centennial and South Boulder Road, down to Highway 42 and South Boulder Road, it's just a pretty complex piece of, uh, segment of road that has a lot of access issues. So we're, we're working on getting a different, uh, consultant and take a, an holistic overview of this area. Due to all these things going on. So, I'm going to say yes, but different than this project. And we could, we've gone back and forth as a design team whether to, um, install this, this median that would cut off these left turns. So we, we could delay that piece. I guess we don't have to make that decision tonight. I would make that decision maybe more in towards the summer. Once I've looked at this more holistically and we're, we're probably closer to going to bid.
Uh, thank you. And, and just on that same track, if, yeah, if, I think delaying it and getting some more public engagement around it and understanding if there are other options is, is an awesome idea. I'm supportive of that. And I just wonder with the development of the property to the south of there, like you have just so many access issues right here. Like, I just wonder if there's any other solution, like a roundabout or something else that could facilitate. I mean, it's awfully close to that railroad. It's awfully close. There's a lot of challenges here. I just wonder if there's another solution. I can't offer it up, but I just wonder if there's another solution.
That's what we're looking at in this other contract. So we'll absolutely be in touch with council once we've, we've gone through some of that.
Great. That's fantastic. Thanks, Count. Uh, thanks, Director Coward. Um, Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, thanks, um, Director Coward about, for all of the explanation. I would echo the, the mayor's concern about cutting off access. There, um, uh, as I think the, the slide that you have up right now shows, and I, I mean, I, I do understand the critical importance of safety. There's, uh, you know, I mean, there's good reasons for, uh, the suggestions that, the design suggestion there that you're making. I just, I, I think that the public and, and certainly, you know, folks that are coming in from Boulder are, I, you know, I don't know how exactly they're going to end up uh, going down eastbound on South Boulder Road and around, you know, where they're likely to turn. We can speculate, I suppose. Maybe you have some ideas about that. I mean, you, you know, based on your, all of the principles of, uh, traffic that you have studied, do you have a sense of what's the most likely, um, path that folks are going to use? Particularly to get into the, uh, you know, the apartments behind Christopher Plaza?
Yeah, I mean, they will still be able to make a left at Cannon Circle. So that's just one more entrance down, right? So that's not too much further to travel east. That would be for the apartments. I understand the U-turn, uh, where people would want to go into, uh, Steel Street. That might be a different issue, but again, they can go up. We have signals north on 42. Um, you can get in through Hackla or Pascal area. So I think the biggest impact is on the apartments. I think the apartments can enter, make a left at Cannon Circle.
Thanks. I, I love, one, one final thing. I, I think it would be i- if there's a way and maybe, maybe part of this will be, you know, we, we can talk about how to do the public engagement, but perhaps Councilmember Dickinson and I can, can help a little bit with that maybe, uh, at some point. Um, but I, I think the folks on, obviously on the north of, of South Boulder Road there in the apartments and otherwise are going to have, just have comments, may have some good suggestions. It may be less of an issue than, than I think it might be, but it may be more. And it's just always good to get that input. So thanks.
And we'll, we'll absolutely keep you in the loop and partner up on when we're going to talk with those folks. And, and you can choose to take part or not, depending as you desire.
Thank you. Councilmember Fagan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, Kurt. This is, it looks like it would be a solution for a lot of the pedestrian issues. Um, I'm wondering first about access to the shopping center to the south of South Boulder Road and not access in so much as exiting. So you, you would only be able to exit to the east?
Correct.
You know, that kind of takes everybody from Louisville away from where they're probably going. So I, I, I'm also kind of interested in some other alternative here, a roundabout or something like that. Um, and then my other question is, would this, would all of these things be necessary? If this is all being put in for pedestrian access, is all this stuff going to be necessary if we have an underpass? Or should we wait and do this if we don't get an underpass?
I mean, the underpass is going to be a north-south thing on the, the west side of Main Street. It's the likely spot. Um, you'll still need to provide surface crossings at intersections in all these areas where you would have an underpass. So you'll still have this crossing here. So you would still want that. Um, and then the protected, so what's causing the need to install this median is when we make the protected arrow for the left onto Main Street. In that permissive phase, when you have a lot of people coming east and a car, cars are focused on that traffic coming east, it's possible they can make a left into a bike or a person that's cross, that's going east-west. When they're more focused on cars. So that protected, going to that protected only phase eliminates that left turn conflict. And, but then it also may mean you get less cars through the intersection and a light. So you need a longer queue back here. So, I mean, more than one engineering firm that specializes in transportation has looked at this with us and has indicated there's a need here based off the trends and the traffic they see and just general observations in the field. So I would say, based off the information I've received, that these things should be done. The safety benefits for now and into the future outweigh the inconveniences that are caused.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any more questions on this slide. So, um, Director Coward, do you want to summarize where, where we're moving forward on this one? I don't want to have, have this conversation derail the progress on the work for this year. So if you'll just summarize the next steps for this one for us.
Yeah, absolutely. So from here, we're going to look at this design with the affected property owners. We'll reach out to see which council members may want to join us in those meetings. And then based on the outcome of those meetings, we'll see if this design needs to be modified or come up with different ideas or maybe phased for a future improvement. So I would say to be determined until we have more conversations with the people that are truly affected.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving on to Centennial Drive. Centennial Drive is basically, what's happening there is there'll be a median modification that happens. We'll create a protected pedestrian refuge, north-south. The traffic analysis shows the queuing should be more than what's there to accommodate the traffic. So we modify the median. That does affect four ash trees. We've talked to the city forester. Two of them are great. Two are, two are, are good. They're ash trees, so at some point they may be impacted and die out anyways. So what we're proposing is to make the median modifications and replace a like or more amount of trees somewhere else in the corridor. Also, if you're coming south on Centennial Drive, we're going to add a no right turn on red blankout. That's similar to what we have at Main Street. And so that's basically what we have going on at Centennial Drive. Any questions on that area?
Any questions from council members? Councilmember Dickinson.
Just clarification on the, the no right turn on red. Doesn't seem like a super high traffic area and that clears that. Obviously, being able to take a right on red clears the traffic there. Is there, what, what's, what's the information to change that?
Uh, we're just, the, the areas where we've had issues are on all the right turns. And especially when there's a walk phase. Usually what happens in these areas is there's a, a walk phase right when the light's also going green. And so by adding the right, no right turn blankout, it creates an, a visual notification for the driver to not turn red at that moment when the walk phases are happening. Allow the pedestrians to get out into the intersection and pass that right turning movement. And then that no right turn red will, um, then turn off. So we, we've used this at Main Street successfully. And so we're just kind of mirroring that approach on Centennial, which doesn't have it right now.
So is it, it changes, like it's no right on red until a moment in which you can't, so it, it does actually change? It's not a permanent no right or red. It's a temporary.
Right, correct. It's not a permanent no right turn on red at this.
Brilliant. I love that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dickinson, rest of that audio? Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thanks, Kurt. Uh, or thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it. Kurt, I don't love the idea of taking out the trees. Uh, we, we hear a lot of people talking about not wanting to get rid of big trees. I, you know, I'll just register my objection with that, I guess. Uh, uh, there's no way to save the trees if you do this particular, um, construction.
It is possible in this location that we don't do these median improvements now. And we just, if it becomes a bigger problem over time, we do them later. In that case, we just do smaller median improvements, uh, at where we're creating the pedestrian refuge. So that is, that is a alternative that we could make. We just felt, in talking with the forester, they didn't feel like it was a big deal, um, if those trees were lost. But if the community feels like that's a big deal, then we obviously respect that.
Okay. Well, I don't know that I've heard anything specific about those particular trees. I think we were, I think I might have heard some things about Via Appia and those, those trees. But, but, um, something to keep in mind anyway.
Okay.
Any other comments? I have to say, I'm supportive of Councilmember Brown's comment. I, I, I think it makes sense to not remove the trees at this time and just make the improvements at the crossing. Um, I mean, alternatively, if there was a way to, um, if you extended, you, you see there's the left turn onto, I think that's maybe Jefferson. If you could shrink down that turn pocket and extend the median so you could have some trees in the middle for heat island effect and run off and to have the nice tree canopy. Like if you could do something like that so that we were replacing trees in this area, I could, I could go for that. But I think just removing the median trees and having concrete all the way across really changes the feeling of the corridor.
You know, we'll take a look at that. That turn pocket's pretty short already, but we'll take a look at it. But I think we're hearing, at least so far, a strong emphasis on this design where we're just doing these improvements up here. And, um, we'll take a look at how we could squeeze trees in there, maintain the right turn pockets.
Cool. Thank you.
Great. Continuing on at Garfield Avenue. Again, we're creating, uh, the directional ramps and the pedestrian refuges. Um, we also will be making a change at Garfield where we'll be going from permissive left turns in each direction. So each of the left turns now, when the signal, uh, changes, people can, uh, make a left turn when, um, when they're able to. So in each, in Garfield location, we're going to go to a protected permissive, which means they'll have a protective dedicated turn phase. And then once that phase ends, there'll be a, a, a small amount of time after that for a permissive. This allows us to clear most of the cars or all the cars out. Uh, then, uh, again, eliminates a lot of those left turning movements. Some of the more severe crashes we've had on the corridor are the permissive turning movements where the cars have not seen a pedestrian or a biker made the left turn movement into an oncoming biker or into a person that, um, is crossing. So this eliminates that conflict, at least initially. Um, those are the major things at Garfield. Any questions on that?
Councilmember Lipton.
Um, yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm trying to recall. There, there's a light there on Garfield. Is it there?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, that's a on-demand signal. And most of the other signals on South Boulder Road, I believe, are timed. So is there any opportunity to make this a time, uh, signalization? So all the traffic doesn't have to stop, you know, immediately when somebody pulls in trying to make a turn or cross the street.
Uh, yeah, we can, uh, look at the operation of that signal and, and make it work better for the east-west corridor, if that's what you're saying.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Because it really disrupts the traffic flow and it's really very energy inefficient. And they, they should wait like everybody else.
Yeah, we can look at that. That's, that's easy to program into the, the system once we kind of look at that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, thank you.
Just making a note real quick. Okay, moving on to Via Appia. So again, we have directional cross ramps. So again, we have directional cross ramps. Uh, we're tightening up the turns. Again, any of these right turn movements where cars uh, will sweep the turn and not really pay attention to who's there. Um, those have been conflicts. So by tightening up the radius, you make it harder to sweep the turn, it slows the drivers down. So that helps people. And then we're adding the pedestrian refuges. Via Appia actually has had several right turn conflicts. Uh, going north on Via Appia and then moving to the eastbound South Boulder Road. So Via Appia will get a restricted no right turn on red at all times. So that will be a restriction. It would cause a little more delay there. But due to the crash statistics in that area, that was what was felt was needed for, um, this intersection. I just think it's due in this location to the volume of traffic and the volume of people around. So any questions on Via Appia?
Mayor Prossamani.
Thank you, Mayor. Kurt, thank you very much for your work on this and your presentation tonight. My question relates to two things. One is, um, the, we have a, um, a path that actually goes on the east side, starting from the south Via Appia up to that intersection, and then another path on the north side of the intersection. And so how will this configuration help people that are following that bike path?
Uh, the bike path over here in the corner?
Uh, I'm talking about over to, to, to the west, yes.
Um, I mean, right now it's going to provide them a more protected crossing. If you're making this north-south crossing, is that the, the question?
That's the question.
Yeah, and the bike path is over here. This is an access path, I think, from the apartments, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that, that's, that's why the, uh, mayor gasped when I asked that question. So.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to gasp.
So the bike path is here, and then people would need to come down to the intersection and cross. Um, I mean, in early, earlier renditions, we explored different things here and, and everyone. The professionals came back to this is where you have a protected crossing in the way of a light. And this is the, the safest way to cross people at surface. So right now, people do need to come across and come down here.
Okay, i- in the, in the next agenda item, we're going to be talking about underpasses. Where would the underpass be in this configuration?
Yeah, that's a great question. We're, we're working through that. So when we originally looked at this quarter very early on, we had an alignment where this trail came down and it kind of came straight across. And there's a concept where the underpass is, is kind of right here. That is still a concept we're looking at. There's still some maybe difficulties in how much that really is going to split up the park in the long run. And, and is that good for the long-term planning of the park? So we're also looking at alignment that crosses over the ditch a little further north and then kind of follows down. And then would come in and possibly align and come up in this area. And then, and then follow Via Appia. And then along the lines of the transportation master plan, re-envision kind of the segment of Via Appia that goes from South Boulder Road down to Via Capri. So you try to, you wouldn't try, but your goal would be to integrate the trail, the transit, the affordable housing crossing, and make all these elements work together. And then in addition, preserve the, the land in the park so it's not bisected. That's currently what the team is working on, are those two alignments. We're just kind of seeing what comes up cost-wise and conflict-wise.
So let, let me make sure I understand what you just said. So given, uh, there's a couple of different proposals for the underpass. If I'm correct, both of those really cross to the east of where the proposed bump outs or whatever the right term is for, you know, having those, uh, sharper right-hand turns. So it seems like they're actually in a different place and serving a different purpose. Is that correct?
For the underpass.
The underpass versus the, uh, proposed things that you have on this configuration.
Correct. I think you'll still need both because you'll still have surface crossings in these areas.
Okay, thank you.
And any, any, even if, let's say we brought the alignment that comes over to Via Appia, this amount of concrete on the corner and in the middle, it's about ten to twenty thousand dollars worth of concrete. So there is, once we shut the street down and do concrete, it's, the traffic control alone is very costly compared to the amount of concrete. So when we do this project, regardless if there's an underpass there and three years or not, we should do all of this. There might be a small amount of throwaway. But it's possible there's not. And again, we'll know more in a month or two, right? So I just want you to know it's insignificant to throw away, really.
All right, thank you, Kurt.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Director Cor, on, on this one. I mean, a, a number of these I really do appreciate. I mean, this one particularly is, is just a dangerous intersection. And I'm, I'm glad we're, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of both slowing down. I mean, this is going to slow down traffic a little bit, but it'll, it'll help to, to slow down the, the wide and you know, both right turns there that you've gone over. I, I do have a question just generally about accidents. Have most of the accidents at this intersection been car vehicle, vehicle, or car, 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 bike, car? Because I'm, I'm just forgetting, you may have included that before and I just didn't follow it.
Yeah, that's a great question. So on this slide, um, from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, there's been thirty crashes in this area. Six of them have been a serious crash. Five of them have been the left turn, so fit people turning in to people. I did gloss over that we're going to make this movement from a protected permissive to protected only. So that fixes those left turn crashes. The right turn crashes, there's actually been twelve. So these slowing down these right turns improves that. And then bicycle-involved crashes are two. I know one of them was very serious and it was because a bike was oncoming and a car turned into the bike. Does that answer your question?
Absolutely. That, and that provides a little bit more color commentary, if you will. And, and that, I'm, I'm just pleased from a, from a safety standpoint, this one is just the most concerning to me and I'm, I'm glad, uh, I'm glad the plan, I mean, this is a good plan and like.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Lay, Director Cor, just to clarify, we're, we don't need to have any discussion tonight about the underpass location or what's preferred. We're just talking about these accurate improvements, right?
Absolutely. This is an accurate improvement, uh, update, and it doesn't have an impact on underpass conversations.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this intersection? Okay, thank you.
Okay, last one is Eisenhower. So Eisenhower, again, will be adding directional ramps, tightening up those, uh, right turn radius, uh, creating a refuge in the middle. And then this one will have a hawk installed. So this is similar to the light, um, over by the, uh, north end crossing where it's a pedestrian hawk signal. So pretty straightforward. This one we've talked about several times as the preferred solution in this area. Um, and any questions on that?
Any questions on the hawk signal at Eisenhower? Director Cor, just seeing this picture reminded me that we've had a couple of comments about the, um, pedestrian crossing marks, like the actual crosswalk marks wearing off at the other hawk signal. When we do all of these improvements or at some other time, will we be able to come in and repaint those stripes?
Oh, uh, the hawk over by, uh, North End?
Yeah.
I'll get those done in the next few weeks. We'll get those refreshed absolutely soon.
Once the weather changes. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Um, Councilmember Lipton.
Kurt, the hawk signal, is that a true hawk signal or is it more of a pedestrian bicyclist, uh, signalization system like we have over by the rec center?
No, this is a true hawk signal like we have over by North End, uh, down by the shopping center. So that, the one by the rec center is a, just a flashing beacon.
Yeah, so how would this operate?
Uh, so this one operates, um, I don't have the exact light signal memorized, but it, it turns on, it starts flashing yellow. Then it slowly changes to a flashing red, then it goes to a solid red to stop traffic. And then it'll go back to, after a certain amount of time, a flashing yellow, which has allowed people to get into the crossing and mostly out of it. And then, uh, eventually the flashing yellow will turn off. So that's the sequence of the lighting. And cars can go once it starts flashing yellow again and the pedestrians not in front of them.
Yeah, so that's what I was gonna, that's what I was asking about. Most people have no idea how it works. And I wonder on basically a four-lane, basically a four-lane highway, whether that's the best signalization or if there would be something simpler like, you know, just the flashing lights like we have at the, uh, rec center.
Yeah.
Because this is, this is more regional traffic, I believe. It's really not localized traffic and, and it is confusing to people. People really aren't trained on how to use a hawk signal, uh, from a, uh, automobile perspective.
Yeah, I understand those comments completely.
But having, having said those, I'll just, I'll just leave it to you and staff to figure that out.
I think Councilmember Lipton, it's a good point that reminds us like we need to continue in our, this doesn't address the regional issue, but in our newsletter to let people know how these types of improvements work, you know, in our, in our quarterly newsletters to tell them. And we have one of these on South Boulder Road by King Supers. Um, so improving the signage to explain to people how this works is important because we already have one. And the nice thing when you use the one by King Supers is it does totally stop traffic, like people stop when you push the button. Whereas the flasher, most people stop. So, you know, with the steep hill and everything like that, this is a, like, you must stop. It's not, it's not flashing yellow at the red light. So that's a good thing. And, and we have been talking about it as a hawk the entire time we've been planning this signal location. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Well, great. That was your update. I know you have larger things to talk about this evening. So thank you for the time and we'll continue to work on the project and do the follow-up points that we discussed tonight.
That takes us to our public comments on this agenda item. If any members of the public like to add anything for the discussion this evening or any questions or comments on this, please raise your hand at this time. Not seeing any. Thank you. That brings us back over to any other council questions, comments, or action. It, it did say discussion, direction, action. Is there a specific action you need council to make this evening, Director Cor?
You gave me the, uh, I guess, direction, action I needed around Main Street and the follow-up there.
Great. Thank you, everyone. And so that takes us to our next agenda item, which is potential transportation tax ballot issues. We'll have three items within this agenda item and we'll go in order, but we will take presentation, public comments, and then council question and comments in general. The topics are discussion direction of existing funds and capital improvement program budget impacts of potential transportation tax, discussion direction of debt financing scenarios for potential transportation tax projects, and discussion direction of potential ballot language for transportation tax. And again, Director Cor, I think, actually, I'm, I'm absolutely wrong. City Manager Volser is going to start off the presentation on this one.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I'll just do a brief, um, update here based on the information in your packet on this first item. So City Council recently discussed, uh, seeking voter approval for approximately fifty million in transportation amenities and improvements throughout the city to assist in repaying the bonds. The City Council has expressed interest in using one point five million of existing sales and use tax revenue from the Capital Projects Fund. The twenty twenty-one projection for total sales and use tax revenue in the Capital Projects Fund is approximately six point six million. Last November, the City Council approved a twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six capital improvements plan, which includes six years of revenue and expenditure projections for the Capital Projects Fund. Uh, this is provided in your packet. In order to remove the one point five million of funding for capital projects and commit those funds to debt service, the City Council's asked staff for options to reduce the Capital Projects Fund expenditures. Uh, so again, in the packet is the approved CIP pertaining to the Capital Projects Funds with transportation-related projects highlighted in yellow. So the city anticipates it would begin receiving the bond proceeds in June of twenty twenty-two. The bond issue could be structured so that the Capital Projects Fund can be reimbursed for any project costs, including design incurred before the city receives, receives bond proceeds. We're also proposing to use capitalized interest for paying interest on the bonds for twenty twenty-two. At this time, staff does not believe it is necessary to begin expenditure reductions until twenty twenty-three. However, projects and funding could be shifted in various ways to address future bond repayment requirements. Staff has provided some options for reducing the CIP expenditures within the capital project funds, uh, such as amending the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three CIP by reducing or removing some of the planned transportation projects. Amending the twenty twenty-two CIP by reducing the paving budget to carry forward a portion of that project budget to provide additional funding for debt repayment. So again, these are just some of the options. Uh, amending the twenty twenty-three CIP by reducing the three point six eight million paving budget to make debt repayments and identifying other non-transportation CIP projects planned in twenty twenty-three to generate one point five million for transportation master plan projects. Reductions to the CIP would be required to future years beyond twenty twenty-three as well. So if the city moves forward with plans to increase funding for transportation project implementation, additional staff resources are necessary. Uh, and funding to support them should be incorporated into the funding scenarios. Those potential staff increases are included in detail in the packet. Uh, in addition, operational costs should be considered for the ongoing maintenance of the projects that are completing, completed. Uh, this may include maintenance such as snow removal, plowing, pavement, concrete improvements, and long-term replacement costs. Estimate costs for ongoing maintenance is approximately ten thousand to twenty-five thousand per year. Uh, and these costs would also be funded through general funding capital projects funds. So in addition to the Capital Projects Fund, uh, reserves and general fund reserves, City Council requested additional information about the potential for utilizing Louisville Revitalization Funds to support projects that are eligible within the urban renewal area. Uh, the LRC plans to review long-term fund projections in June. Uh, so we're unable to provide information about the status or reserves and the future fund balance at this time. Uh, next steps in June would involve developing updated financial projections for the remaining life of the URA and discussing LRC long-term funding priorities. Staff has received some guidance from the city attorney regarding the expenditure of funds beyond the life of the urban regulatory. All funds generated by property tax increment, which is the main source of LRC funding, remaining in the LRC special fund must be pledged, not necessarily spent within the twenty-five-year life of the LRC's TIP provision, which ends in twenty thirty-two. Uh, if the LRC has pledged funds under a TIP agreement or to the repayment of bonds, for example, the LRC could still use property tax increment in the special fund to pay those obligations beyond twenty thirty-two. However, the Louisville Revitalization Commission wouldn't receive property tax increment beyond the twenty-five-year life or beyond twenty thirty-two. So any pledge of funds beyond twenty thirty-two, we need to come out of funds already deposited in the special fund. If City Council and the LRC decide to move forward with the use of these funds, staff will work with, uh, the city attorney to determine the appropriate agreement to address, uh, the issues related to, uh, funding scenarios. Uh, and then also outlined in your packet, staff is also actively pursuing grant funding opportunities. So that's, uh, information is in your packet as well. So staff is seeking council direction about how to address these budget impacts if the ballot measure proposal is advanced. So those questions include what amount of existing capital projects fund sales tax does council want to dedicate to bond repayment in future years? So are there any specific CIP projects council would like to suspend or remove? What's the expectation from City Council for the use of urban renewal funds from the LRC? Uh, specifically, does City Council want to request a specific annual or one-time contribution to run, to, to bond repayment? For these projects over the course of the life of the urban renewal district? And is City Council seeking a contribution commitment to the package prior to ballot question approval? So before first reading in July? Um, and are there other funding sources that City Council would like to consider for bond repayment? So there's some, uh, other suggestions that, uh, staff hasn't addressed. Um, and how would City Council like to address the ongoing operational costs for the completion of these projects? So those are some of those questions that we have. Happy to answer any questions. Um, you have staff here to assist. Um you have staff here to assist as well. Um so happy to take any questions and look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thanks so much, City Manager Bolster. So we're, we're gonna try to split the conversation up into those segments in the packet. And understanding that some of these things are dynamic and so if things go back and forth, that's okay, but we're, we'll start off the discussion with. Um talking about the capital improvement program budget and we had talked at the last meeting about wanting to contribute about one and a half million. From the capital improvement program and I think there's some interest in talking about the LRC. Uh budget and any commitment that could come from the LRC given three of the underpasses are in the district or significantly impact. Um the infrastructure of the district and the blight there. And so if we could start on that topic and just will hold off on the debt financing scenarios and ballot language until later in the conversation. And again, it'll be a bit fluid, so if that doesn't happen, I understand. Uh but we'll just start with that and then we'll move to those other discussions once we nail down the first part of it. And so it looks like in the queue, so far we have Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'd like to propose a pre-topic, if I may. You know, when we talked about this two weeks ago, um it was really the first time that many of us were, were thinking about the projects and. Yeah, we talked between three and eight projects, I think, and um at some point we. I don't know if we were tired or whatever, we came down to six. Um and I guess I would like to see if my colleagues would entertain a discussion about scoping this. Um because I would like to consider ones that I think are, are very important. Um and maybe not doing the entire list and trying to shrink this down. You know, I, I think we could do all six. We could, you know, we could certainly raise taxes. We could get them all done. Um the question to me is, what should we do? And as I reviewed the transportation master plan today and looked at the principles that were there and. Our Director of Public Works covered a lot of those about efficiency and safety and, you know, layering and. Uh making sure we take care of our local and regional needs, uh but also support our, our economic opportunities who are out there. So. I, I would like the, have the opportunity to discuss scope before we get into the financing, if I may.
That seems just fine. Are folks open to entertaining reopening the discussion that we um concluded at the last time? It's within, it's within the scope, I believe, of the potential transportation ballot issues. I just know that we had concluded this discussion. So looking to others to make sure that we want to have this conversation. Everyone has to participate. Councilmember Faye, you good? All right, it looks like there's general um agreement about the discussion. So uh, do you want to kick it off, Mayor Proton Maloney?
I, I would like to, if I may, if I may continue. Um you know, as, as uh, as I looked at the, and I'm gonna call it eight projects. Um because there were two more that were mentioned in some of the um, the information and, and so forth. But I think there's four that I think are, are very important. So the, the first two that I think are important are along Highway forty two. Um because there, as we talked about the uh at grade crossings, those are all about safety. They're all about. Um en- ensuring we have layered um, you know, transportation and so forth. So the two on Highway forty two, I think are very important. The one at Main Street and South Boulder Road, I think is very important. Um and then one for me that's on the bubble, uh especially after the discussion we had with the Director Kaur just a little while ago. Is Via Appia and South Boulder Road. So for me, there's three that are very important. There's a fourth that is lesser important. Um but then the other two we talked about, I, I've spent time out uh walking, riding my bike and I, I find those to be. Less important. So that's where I'm at. So I would propose three to four of these underpass projects. So with that, I will just kick off any comments of my colleagues.
Thank you, uh Mayor Proton Maloney. And so, you know, in putting together a proposal for, for the council. And working through this in the last many months, sort of my thinking around this is. The transportation master plan we all worked on, it was a unanimous vote trying to come up with improvements to the community. Um and it, it certainly showed us that there are deficiencies in one section of town with connectivity. Um that, you know, we have the major roads there with Highway forty two and South Boulder Road that are cutting neighborhoods off and kids off from being able to get to each other's homes. And uh all ages and abilities from being able to enjoy, you know, all the trails and networks and access. And so I think that's why we got a lot of the comments we did. Um and so when I was looking at the whole list of projects. If people continue to say, you know, they like this one or not that one, like for example. Um people in the Steel Ranch neighborhood have emailed me many times over the last several years about their connections of the Lake to Lake Trail. You know, the developer who built that development promised that to the community. Um you know, it's a lesson learned that we shouldn't just. Um oh, we should require developers to put in infrastructure that they're going to tout. We shouldn't just let them. Say that it's going to happen and then it's on the rest of the community. So hopefully we learn that lesson. Um but nonetheless, the people in that neighborhood expected it and it, it is a big regional trail connection. So I can understand why that impacts them more than maybe the underpass at somewhere else might. And same thing with the Dillon Road connection. It's a really regional connection on the power line trail. That if we do a hard surface all the way to the bus stop. Um it, it makes it so that people from the entire community can ride their bike to the, to the bus rapid transit. It makes it so that everybody has access to the bikeway. Um do people have other options? Yes. Do, will they use them? No, because those other options exist today and still every single day. You can stand on Dillon Road right there and watch people walk their bike across the street because they have line of sight to the trail on the other side. So I do completely understand prioritizing. I do completely understand the idea that some things are more important than others. But I do think this slate of six underpasses that we actually have narrowed down, because I think there are nine or ten in the um. Transportation master plan represents a little bit of something for different communities across Louisville. So it's not only in Ward one, it gives something to the south end of town. It's not only the Lake to Lake Trail connections that serve Ward two on Via Appia. So it gives everybody a little something. Um and it'd be interesting to see if the community's interested in moving forward. That's where I was coming from in the last conversation. And so I think moving forward to understand. All right, how would we put in a little bit of money from the Capital Projects Fund, which looks pretty doable? I'm excited to have that conversation. And how could we ask the voters, which looks like it'll end up being about sixty dollars a year for a seven hundred thousand dollar house? And finding out if they want to do all these projects, I, I think that that's a worthwhile thing to do. And so that's where I came in in the last conversation. That's where I am starting out this evening, but I do completely appreciate the idea that. Um you know, it's, it's a big task and if we bite it off into little pieces, we just might be able to do it. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I have to respectfully disagree with my fellow Ward three council member. I do believe that the Dillon Road connection is particularly important. I think for many of the reasons that Mayor mentioned, um there's high density housing there that, you know, needs a connection. A better connection um to the hard surfaces, you know, and, and to the, to the bus rapid transit. Um you know, that power line trail is a particularly important conduit, you know, north throughout the city. Um so uh you know, I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant to, to take the package down. Um because I do think that, you know, folks in, in Ward three are gonna think. You know, there's a lot of improvements going in on, in Ward one and rightly so. Um but that, you know, there are also needs in our area. Um and, and shouldn't, shouldn't there be a part of, shouldn't, shouldn't we, shouldn't we have improvements that, that sort of go across the city? In that way. So um I would be very much opposed to getting rid of that particular um underpass in particular. Um and I do think that we can afford it. Um I think that the, the, you know, in terms of having six, we, we discussed this. I know there was, it was a split vote. I know there was a, you know, there's disagreements, but, but we did, uh, but we did sort of. Um talk about this issue, give direction to staff for six, for six uh underpasses. And so I'd like to continue to, to talk about six underpasses at this point.
Councilmember Faye.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, um I'm, I'm leaning toward agreeing with Counselor Brown. And the mayor, I think we might as well do all six of them. Um they have been discussed, they have been approved by the voters, uh at least for the intention and the desire. Um and in particular with the Steel Ranch uh underpass, that was arranged with the city. Not just with the developer when the development went in. And I believe the metro district was actually, has actually given money to the city toward the cost of that. Now, it wasn't nearly enough to do it, but they feel an ownership of some kind. In, in that underpass and it would be a good connection for the trail. So I would also be inclined to approve. Going forward with all six.
Councilmember Lipton? You're on mute.
Thank you. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that we discussed this two weeks ago that this did become a little bit rich for me. And I would support doing something a bit modest. You know, when I agreed to approve the transportation master plan. To me, it was kind of like a, you know, it's like the menu in a restaurant. You have a menu, you know what you could get. And what people might want, but I never intended that this would be something implemented in the short run. It was a very long term vision for the city's transportation and, you know, now. It, there seems to be just a rush to judgment to approve a lot of spending without actually a lot of analysis. And I still feel very discomforted by the fact that we don't have good cost estimates and I would like not to bring something to the taxpayers without. Having that so we can deliver on what we promise. Um I would agree that probably something in three to four, three or four underpasses. Uh should suffice for now. I, I'm certainly interested to see how the numbers support that. You know, I think the, the mayor mentioned the sixty dollar per year per uh residence tax. I'm not sure how you get there. Uh that's not the numbers that I was working on this afternoon. So um I think at some level, this needs to be scaled to. Um what we can afford, really what the community can afford. I don't, I don't see a, I don't see a lot of uh. Anxiousness to raise taxes uh both for residences as well as the business. I mean, we talked about the business community earlier in terms of economic development. If you want more economic development, vitality. Uh you don't do that by just raising taxes. Um so I'm very interested in see how the numbers fall out. But I would like to see something a bit more modest. And that's just, that's exactly what I said during the last meeting.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um and the mayor is right. If you go to the transportation master plan, there's ten underpasses on there. Um there's lots of projects on there and they're on there because they're all important. Uh they're important, you know, at varying levels. You know, it's, it's, it's kind of hard to have this discussion. We take it in chunks like this because we talk about what's the right number. Well, is it three? Is it four? Is it six? Is it eight? Is it ten? Um it comes down to how do you afford that? And um the, the numbers are important. As Mayor, you mentioned the number and Counselor Lipton. Just wondering how we got that number. I, you know, I think that's, that's part of the concern I have here is. Um you know, one of my, my principles around this is how can we fund this with. Um bonding against existing revenues, existing uh resources. And to me, that's one of the principles I've been using and that's been part of my target. Um because we've talked about other ballot issues. I mean, this year we talked about two. Um we decided we weren't ready for one and we might consider doing it next year or in the future. There'll be other things that come up. Um for me, it's a balance of, that's, as I started off, could and should. Can we? Could we build all ten? Sure. We could do a hundred million dollar bond issue and we could raise property taxes, but should we? Um is, are all of those underpasses the most, most important tax increases? That we would want to put on the ballot over the next, say, three to five years? I, I would say no. And so what I'm trying to do is strike a balance with other things that we think are important, sustainability is. Or climate tax or whatever somebody wants to call that is what we talked about this year. Um are we gonna be spending everything on this and then, you know. If we want to do that in the future, increasing property taxes, again, are we gonna do that every year? Or, you know, should we do some here and some in other places to build the more of those goals? So those are, that's my thinking and my principles around this. And I think it's hard to have this discussion. Yeah, all six? Great. You know, the, the one on Dillon, I, I would be one of the people that would benefit the most from that because I go out that way a lot. Um but is that the best way to go from the bus stop to town? I don't know if it is or not. And that's something, when the transportation master plan, we approved it, I approved it. And so that's still a question in my mind as a cyclist. So anyway, doing this uh. One piece at a time is really hard for me, but I just want to let you know what my thinking and my principles around this are. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, I, I, it's interesting, I think we all prepared what we want to say. And then Counselor Maloney just spoke and brought up a lot of other um thoughts. And so I, you know, I think what's nice about this conversation, I mostly agree with everybody, right? Like, I think everyone's making some, some really valid points and. I find myself really flexible in this conversation about, I can, I can kind of see um. Us going in lots of directions, maybe not ten underpasses. Um I probably don't get myself there. Um but uh. And no one's really, you know, seriously proposing that. But, you know, I think, I think uh Mayor Protem's comment about. What we can do for what pool of money I think is important to me, that, you know, if we can do. Four underpasses without increasing property taxes or we can do six underpasses with a modest tax increase. I, I think I'm comfortable with either. Um but I do understand there's probably a difference, right? That, that if we were to limit the scope a little bit, we might be able to limit whether or not we actually increase property taxes in order to accomplish it. Um I'm also, you know, thinking about, and I made this comment in our last meeting of. You know, each individual underpass is important. And as you start to get some, like if you pretended you had to. The next one actually, in my opinion, does become a little less important once you have a couple near it. Um and it, it's less critical, but if the others weren't there, then it's more critical. And so I actually think that way of the, the current proposal for the Dillon uh underpass is that, you know, we have one on eighty eighth. And we have one at the, at, at the um Coal Creek. Um but the goal, of course, like we have two underpasses very close to the proposed third underpass. And so a part of me feels like, well, if those two didn't exist, then this one would be really important. With those two, maybe just an at grade crossing is enough. And so it's one of those like, I mean, yeah. I, I think it'd be great to have it. Um but maybe it's not as important and like, I think it'd be great to have. All five of those underpasses that are kind of near forty two and South Boulder Road. Um but do we need all five? If we get four of those five, that's pretty amazing. If we get three of those five, that's pretty amazing. Um so trying to balance those, those, those pieces and I think Mayor, in our last meeting, say, well, do you want to propose which one we don't do? Like, you know, who do you want to piss off? Um and I think that is tough. I think that, you know. All of them, all of them have their merits and all of them are important. And that's not even considering three or four more that also have merits. So, you know, I'm, I, I guess I want to make sure I'm being clear to my colleagues that I am. Flexible on what the final number is. I would actually, and I'd look to your counsel on this is. I would like to prioritize them as I sort of put forward last, last meeting, one through six. That I think we all understand that the cost could become uh pretty incredible in ten years from now. When we're trying to do the fifth or sixth, that, that we need to prioritize. And if we only get to four, even with fifty million. Or we only get to four with forty minute, whatever we decide to do, that we have a prioritization so that um, that we're getting the ones we need. Um the most. Um and the last thing I'll say, and then I'll let someone else speak, of course, is um. But as, as far as it relates to wards, I mean, I, I think it's probably difficult because I'm in Ward, I'm Ward one representative. And five of the six underpasses are proposed in Ward one. Um but I don't, I don't find that the ward piece matters very much. I mean, there are lots and lots of underpasses in Ward three currently and I don't find that to be unfair. It was necessary and those are good underpasses. There's a wonderful underpass in Ward two uh at the Davidson Mesa. There's a great underpass that goes from Ward one to Ward two over South Polar Road. Um that's a, a nice ward connector. Um and these are just like, it's South Polar Road, it's forty two. This happened to be in Ward one. But I don't find this to be like, oh, so Ward one's getting all the underpasses, I think these are just the ones that are kind of up now, so um. I think that's that's all I have, Mayor, so I appreciate your time.
Thanks, councilmember Dickinson, so I think you laid out a good path forward, I just wanted to reflect on a couple of things you said, one, one, just for everyone. During the transportation master plan, the. Uh, planners that we hired um, actually told us that we couldn't do an ad crate crossing on Dylan Road because it causes a queuing problem for the traffic. They recommended that we actually even add one more underpass. That we didn't all agree to just because it got too expensive and that was up at eighty eighth going from north to south, so they. There's the existing one, but they even wanted us to put one more in that we didn't add in the final plan, we cut it. And that was just because no community members asked for it, but they had recommended that from a traffic flow standpoint. And to not do a signal on Dylan, so just a comment and then um. So I think the path that you laid out is a good one, we'll have more information on the costs. Uh, around June when we have the next conversation, so I think that that makes sense like a good time. To do the prioritization exercise that you've laid out, once we have that updated cost and design information from the public works director. Because then we'll have more information and perhaps the cost of the different scenarios, or maybe we'll learn one of them doesn't work. You know, so I think at that point it makes sense to go through that exercise and to talk about like the way that in the third item tonight. We'll hear more about the way we word the ballot language for the specific problems, but ensuring there's enough flexibility, projects, sorry, not problems. But ensuring there's enough flexibility. To prioritize and do down through the queue as far as we can go. So does that work for everyone to carry on with the approximate fifty million dollar number that we've been talking about for tonight? Knowing that we're going to go through a prioritization exercise when we have more information from the public works director. I'm just, I was trying to listen to everyone and see if there's a path forward, Mayor Protem Maloney.
You know, the the one of the principles that I laid out there was trying to fund or try to bond against current revenues and and resources. I'd like to have that discussion before I agree yes or no or vote yes or no on that, you know, quite honestly, because. It depends on how much we're willing to, um, you know, encumber. Or or allocate from CIP, there's the whole urban renewal district and. Funding there potentially, I I guess I'd like to hear from my colleagues. Of how much interest they have in investing those funds and these kinds of things, so. It's hard for me to answer that, quite honestly.
Okay, and I just, I wasn't trying to put those things at odds to each other, so maybe I misspoke, but I felt like that's the discussion we're about to have, is going through the CIP. And see how much willingness people are willing to put forward.
Well, right, and and so I I'm not really changing my perspective on this, quite honestly, I'm I'm still trying to get to the same principled approach, but. You mentioned fifty million dollars, are we agreeing to fifty million dollars and? I'm not willing to have that, I'm I'm not, I guess I would abstain or object to that without having the funding discussion at some level. Because if there's no interest in using CIP and no interest in using urban renewal funds, then it would all be tax. And then I would have a great objection, so I'm just. Just giving you an idea where where I'm at.
And and I really apologize, I'm just not, I may be the only one not fully understanding and everyone else might be, but I feel like that is the discussion we're working on having tonight.
Great, but let's have that without the total number.
Okay, great.
That's where that's where I got stuck.
Okay, I understand, I understand.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I I guess just to to respond to what um, Mayor Protem Maloney was saying. I uh, I'm more than, I would, I think I would also be concerned if we were funding the entire fifty million dollars out of tax. But my understanding is that the conversation that we're having is there would be some. Existing revenue and there would be some. Tax revenue potentially, and so that's that's the direction and where my head is at at this point, so.
Great, councilmember Ley.
I mean. I'm I'm trying to sort of puzzle through some of this. Because I think, you know, we we have talked about. Dollars, we've talked about, I mean, the fifty million dollars we talked about. The prioritization of projects and the number of projects. We talked about what it's going to cost and I don't know that. That third issue, what it's going to cost the average taxpayer if we do all of these. I don't know what. What's going to drive the discussion right now, so maybe, um, you know, what I would say about the projects is. I I think I don't have. I I think the the um. The priority that. Mayor Protem laid out. Both explicitly with the four and I guess implicitly. He indicated that there were two that he wanted to leave out. Or that he would leave out at this stage, uh, and ordered those, I I'm not. I'm not. Absolutely saying that. I don't want those two projects, indeed. The Steel Ranch project is one that has been on the table and there's so much. We've put so much time and effort and design in that, that's designed better than I think any of the others. And of course, from from my standpoint, I we can, I could say the same thing that councilmember Dickinson said, which is. Most of these are, you know, there are five of the six of them we're talking about are in Ward one and. So, you know, that's that's great for us, I think, though. The bigger issue is connectivity in all of it and that's what we're really. Trying. To to do and a number of them at South Buller Road and forty two, they're they're very much safety related as well and so. But, you know, I. I guess the question that I have is. Which, what's going to be the driver here? Is it going to be, we're going to settle on a number? Are we going to settle on a number of, you know, a number of? Dollars, are we going to settle on what the impact that's going to be on each of the folks or is it, are we going to settle on? We want these projects and we don't want others.
Well, so councilmember Ley, we did have a vote last time and we moved forward to look at funding a number of projects, I think it's absolutely acceptable as Mayor Protem Maloney brought up to consider it and. Continue to discuss it, but I mean, tonight, what we could do is start to look at the CIP and see how much people are willing to contribute. Because if we say zero dollars, then I think it brings a lot of light to Mayor Protem Maloney's point, if we say zero dollars, then it's going to be very hard to do six. Because I don't think anyone has the appetite to put the entire burden on the taxpayer, so that's why I keep kind of pushing us toward that next part of the discussion. Because what if we easily come up with a million and a half dollars or maybe not easily, but what if we? Can come to some agreement around it and consensus around it and then what if when we're talking to the LRC? You know, what if we find out the LRC is interested in helping us with the Main Street underpass because it's a gateway to the urban renewal area, it connects the defunct shopping center. To the Main Street, what if the urban renewal district is interested in helping us with the Highway forty two and South Street underpass? Because it's a major gateway into downtown, it connects the open space in the urban renewal district, it helps to eliminate light. So I think if we start talking about some of these. And looking at the numbers, then we can start to understand, you know, councilmember Lipton obviously ran some scenarios on his own, I obviously ran some scenarios on my own. We can start to figure out, are we talking about zero dollars in additional new taxes, are we talking about sixty dollars in new taxes, are we talking about, what are we talking about? So that's why I feel like if we move to the next part and look at the capital improvement plan, that'll help. Move us down the road to understanding, hey, do we need to cut some of these out? Or can we actually include all of them that we've landed on? And just continue down the path in little bits and each step of the way, we're going to have more information after we talk about the capital improvements plan. It could totally change the entire discussion, right, depending on the conversation.
Yeah, and just to feedback, I think that's, I I have no problem with that, I I think that's a good way to do it and I'd also mention. Just with respect to the LRC. There, you know, we're pushing them on them, us, I'm on that. Commission two, you know, we're, they're going to be looking at this in June, right? So we're gonna, we're pushing them pretty hard on the timing. To consider that very quickly. And, you know, close to the to the deadline that we're we're going to have, so. You know, my. My sense of it is that. We need to build whatever case we're going to build and then we take it to them and and discuss it with them, but I I do, I I'm I'm with you, Mayor, I think I. I'm agreeable to doing what you're suggesting in terms of the discussion before.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Mayor, I really appreciate the um, sort of, I don't know if reframing is right, but but um. Framing it for us, I I would like to start with um. Suggesting that we we look to find one point five million from the uh, capital improvement project fund. Um, and see where that puts us, of course, we don't know for sure about the LRC or the um, LRF, however you want to state it, we all know what I'm talking about. But I would like to start with that number of one point five, I think that's aggressive, I think that. Some people will want less, maybe somebody wants more, but I'd like to, maybe if if it's okay with you, start with the conversation around one point five. From that, because I think you're right, I think that's a huge determinant of what what next, like, how much does that get us? What else would we need to do more, blah, 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 so. Is that, if that's, that's an okay starting point for that conversation.
I I think it is and I just want to look to Mayor Protem Maloney, does, I mean, I feel like this is staying on the path that you described and I just want to understand if it is or not.
Thank you for checking in, Mayor, absolutely. This is where I was going, I'd like to see what the funding sources are before we decide how much we're going to spend. Because, and I agree with the one point five, by the way, councillor Dickinson, you know, my looking, if you look at page of. I don't know if I'm going too far, Mayor, or may I continue?
No, and I think if if we could ask the city clerk to put it on the screen too, that way folks can follow along. Whatever.
Could I ask for a break? I think we're going to be here a couple hours.
I'm sure, so it's eight o'clock is and um, we can take a. Is a five minute break okay with everybody?
Sure.
Looks good, all right, we'll see everybody, it's eight oh two, we will see everybody back at eight oh seven. All right, it's eight oh seven, it looks like everyone is back. And Mayor Protem Maloney had the floor.
I I think I had interrupted uh, my colleague. Councillor Dickinson. No.
Did you?
Well, I I think you made a statement and then the mayor asked me about what you said. And so then I went off, so I I don't want to interrupt your train of thought, please.
Oh, my train of thought is long gone, um, no, I just, all I was doing, uh, Mayor Protem was was. Starting with that concept of of one point five million out of um, the CIP to see if that was palatable, of course. There are a lot of decisions we need to make if that is what we want to do. But just kind of starting, if if people are like, whoa, 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 one point five is ridiculous. Then then that's something we need to talk about, if someone's like, no, 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 we should be doing two, then that's what we should be talking about, but if. If one point five seems palatable to everyone, then we should look at what that means. About what we're funding from the CIP and what else we would need, so that was all.
Okay, and so Mayor Protem Maloney, did you want me to turn it back to you?
Sure, um, you know, the other um, area we talked about was the urban renewal district and the funding we have there, um, councillor Ley mentioned that. You know, we don't have a huge story to tell, um, although, Mayor, you did did mention a number of things. Three of the eight of the underpasses are in the urban renewal district, they do have impact. You know, certainly from a transportation perspective, certainly from an economic perspective, so. I would be, I would like to entertain the discussion of a similar number coming from the LRC of one point five million a year. Through their period of time, which is twenty twenty thirty two. If we look at the uh, long term financials that were put together. For the LRC last spring, spring of twenty twenty. It looks like that that number, in my opinion, is doable unless there's other large infrastructure projects that are more important than these and. We should consider all that, but that will take it more now. And we should consider all that, but that will take it more analysis. But at, at least I'd like to consider that level of magnitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. And so if it's okay with everybody, if we can have the CIP conversation. And then I think then the city manager laid out a number of questions, and one of them is exactly that, Mayor Proton Maloney, is what would we like to ask the LRC for? So we, if we could have that right after the CIP discussion, then we'll keep them together. Is that okay? All right, so City Clerk Mia, could you please put up the CIP sheet so we can start the discussion? And is our finance director on this evening, Kevin Watson? Director Watson, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Thanks, Director Watson. I just had a quick question to start out. And just to refresh everybody, so do we have any kind of reserve in the capital projects fund? Like a requirement?
Right, and on the, oh, a reserve requirement. No, we do not.
Okay, and so our reserves are in the general fund and other places for emergencies? And, and project have contingency built in, or how is that dealt with?
That's correct. Our rule of thumb has been on past budgets to try and leave between, you know, one or two million dollars within the capital projects fund. But as you recall, when we did the biennial budget for '21 and '22, we did not do that, and I included that within the packet. Kind of showed you, you know, where we were estimating that on page 445 of your packet. We were well below a million dollars. And that's fine. I mean, I think everybody understood that we do not have a requirement from our financial policies. And, you know, if you spin down the capital projects fund like we have in the past, the general fund usually is what we look to, to. You know, to support the capital projects. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. And so could you just tell us how much unallocated revenue we have in the different, like in 2023 through 2026 from the capital projects fund?
Yes, and as you can see on page 445 of your packet, we're increasing our fund balance. So what that means is revenues is exceeding expenditures there. We've actually. This is what was presented in the budget document last year. We've actually made, made some adjustments to this. We're averaging about a million dollars a year. It goes from between 800,000 up to like a million four, depending on which year you're looking at. But it averages about a million dollars per year, the excess revenue over expenditures from 2023 to 2026.
Okay, so we have about a billion on average of unallocated revenue in the, in the capital projects fund in any given year. Thank you. And then I have a question for Director Corr. On a past presentation, you talked to us about our key performance indicators on the pavement program. And hitting our targets and meeting about three and a half million dollars a year in that paving line item, starting in 2023. Is that still the case to be able to hit our goals? With three and a half million dollars a year, starting in 2023?
The three and a half million I remember talking about was when we hit our PCI. That's like our steady state.
Right.
Yeah, so the PCI, we're gonna get to 75, I think at 2026 or seven was the last conversation. But you could get a steady state right now and then reduce your paving budget.
Okay, so the steady state pavement budget is what you were saying was three and a half million?
Yeah, I think it's around there, and I could reconfirm that. For a future conversation.
All right, thanks. So I'm just trying to put some ideas out there for conversation's sake, for a starting point. But I mean, we can go through anybody's suggestions or any other starting points. But it seems to me to try to get to that one and a half million using the unallocated funds. And putting our pavement management program at our steady state funding of three and a half million gets you pretty darn close to the one and a half million. Councilmember Lipton?
Sorry. Thanks. I have a question for Kevin. As we go through this exercise and we're seeing where particularly continuing funds might be available. Can you translate for us, just a rule of thumb, a million, say, a million dollars in. Other cost reductions with support, how many millions of bonds?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head. You know, maybe Jim can tell, tell you right now. But as you can see from the, you know, roughly what the debt service is on the $50 million that he has presented. And that's on page. We can do some quick math here. On page 462 of your packet. You can see roughly what the debt service for 20 years and 30 years is, 450 million. So.
Could we put Jim on the spot?
Yeah, the, the other thing.
Fairly simple calculation.
Yeah, I, I just don't, the other thing that you need to remember, though, is that, is when we look at the numbers that Jim's provided now, those are very conservative interest rate numbers also. When we looked at earlier, we were looking at current market rate interest. Okay, Jim, are you there? Can you help me out here?
I'm sure. Well. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks to the city council. I'm happy to be here to participate in your conversation. We can certainly get a, a precise. Measure of debt capacity that, that relates to particular debt service burden, you know, over a 20-year or a 30-year period. We, we presented or prepared 20- and 30-year debt structures for tonight's purposes. But Kevin's really correct. We can interpolate really. And back into, you know, how much debt, you know, a million dollars of debt service can support. You know, and get very close. So. I'll just do those quick calculations while you folks continue the discussion. But I, I would say, you know, a million dollars a year probably gets you 15 million of upfront money. In a general 20, 20-year repayment term. But I, I can be more precise.
Jim, I got 19.6, but I used 3%. Check mine out.
We're, we're getting there.
Yeah, and I got about 20 million, so I think we're kind of closing in on. That's, and that's on a 20-year bond. What about the 30?
I did it on the 30.
Yeah, it's not quite as productive. You know, you don't get the same present values, extend the term. So. I'd say that accounts for the difference between a 15 million and a $20 million, you know, first guess. But let us dial that in.
Thank you.
And just give you a quick.
Okay.
Number that I have more confidence in.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lipton, do you want to ask some other questions while they work on that?
No, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, other folks? Want to go looking at any scenarios in the capital plan? We do need to come up with something concrete out of this, hopefully. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, can I, I just want to ask a question. So I wanted to understand the nature of the mayor of your comments about the street paving budget. And then what Director Corr was saying. So if we were to. Take our street paving budget down to more of a steady state. What would that, so that would bring us to 3.5 million dollars. Is that enough? Does that find a million dollars, million and a half dollars right there, right? And what would that mean for the condition of our streets, I guess, is the question for Director Corr.
Yeah, I think lately we've been spending four and a half, up to five and a half million. So the steady state means you got to a score of 70, which is a, a good, that's a good score. It benchmarks really well compared to many communities.
Okay.
And we'd stay at a score of 70. So instead of putting enough money in to make the pavement condition index keep going up by a point or two every few years. We would just target to keep it at a 70. And that number, I think, when we looked at it last, was around three and a half million. There could be years that are up or down, but overall, that's about the average.
Okay. I mean, that seems like a fairly favorable, a fairly reasonable thing to start with. Especially since these are transportation projects, and we would sort of be shuffling money from roads to, on a multimodal option, right? A underpass of some sort, so underpasses for bikes and pedestrians. So I mean, there's some, there's some logic there, and I think I could probably support that. We wouldn't have to take it all out of the paving budget. Maybe there's some, some other places that we could talk about it, but I think that's, that seems like a very logical place to.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you. Just for my clarification, I believe we were talking, so we have, we have two pieces here. We have the revenue side. And I think it's been demonstrated by looking at the chart on page 445 of our packet that there's, you know. There's excess revenue that could be contributed toward this, and I think, Mayor, you said along the lines of a million, I would agree with a number like that. So what we're looking at, we think 1.5 is right now, but then we're looking for coming up with another half million. So the going to a steady state, once we reach the, what is it, PCI? Is that right? Of 70 is when we reach steady state, and then we're talking about 3.4, 3.5 a million a year. Which gets us the other half million. So I think that's where the one and a half million come from. The question is, would we want to look at the other projects? And is that what you're asking, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Because I, I think that those, those two get us to one and a half million, the number that Counselor Dickinson brought up. If you want to go deeper, then we have to start looking at, you know, crossing off projects off the CIP list.
Or other, like, so another option, I agree in general, but another option, like, for example, golf equipment replacement. We had moved those things into the CIP to compete. But things have changed in the last year with golf. Maybe we move the golf items back into the enterprise. If we feel like golf in the long run is going to be continuing popular. I mean, that is a question mark, but there are some other things you could do as well, so.
Sure. So I, I didn't come prepared for that level of detail. I mean, golf is one, for example, where, actually, last year, they broke even. And so, you know, that's, and they have a fund balance of, you know, Director Watson can correct me, but 200,000 to 300,000. So, you know. Anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I think this is a, I'll just kick my trash can. I think this is a productive conversation, and I, and I, I like getting into the details of it. You know, I, I do see how that could be. I guess, I guess what I want to get to is, we have a general fund balance. That if, if we're off by, you know, a little bit here or there, again, like Director Cowherd said, you know, there, there might be a year where. We need to spend more on pavement than, than another year. It might average 3.5 or average even 4 million. But there might be a year where we need to do 5, 5.5, 6. And part of what gives me confidence right now in our ability to pay this debt over time is our considerable current general fund balance. Way above our target of 3 million. And so if we're off by a half a million, even every year. We're, we, we are in a position where, you know, I think 1.5 is responsible. I think we can do 1.5. And if we're, if we want to argue 100 or 200,000 either way, I don't think that's, if we can't make that work in the CIP. Yes, maybe we cut something, but also we have enough in the general fund that I think we'd be able to repair the, the, the CIP. If necessary, for an important project like the golf carts or like, you know, some other, other things that we might otherwise be using the CIP budget for. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. It looks like City Manager Balster has something to add. City Manager?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I, I just want to add that, you know, that we need to have another conversation about general fund balance. And we'll do that during the budget amendment process. So there's, there's considerable additional expenses in the general fund that are not in there currently. So I, I just want to be really cautious about suggesting that, like, what we looked at previously is, is where we're gonna end up. There's been a lot of changes since we looked at this last, and so, and we, we're still working on that information. So I, I don't have that information for you tonight, and I don't know if Kevin wants to add anything, but. There are significant expenses that still need to be included in the general fund.
Thank you, City Manager Balster. And so it sounds like there's some consensus with moving forward with the unallocated revenue. And making pavement at steady state starting in 2023. Does that seem like what other people are hearing to get to the one and a half million? Okay, and so are people okay with? That level? Would people, would anyone like to propose looking for additional cuts beyond that or additional reallocations beyond that? Mayor Proton Maloney, and if the answer is no, then I was going to move to the LRC discussion, if that's what your question is.
The answer is a conditional, though.
Right.
It's no, depending on where we come out with the estimates and everything else. But I, for this right now, I'm ready to move ahead.
Thank you. And Jim and Eric, thank you, sir. The floor is yours.
Sure, the, real quickly, we've just done the interpolation of the numbers that were circulated tonight. For a 20-year repayment term, where annual debt service of a million dollars generates 13.56 million. Of bond proceeds at an interest rate of 4%. If the rate's at 3%, it goes up to 14.835 million. And with those same two interest rates, for a 30-year repayment term, the, the 4% interest rate. Estimate would be 17.25 million for 30 years of payments of a million dollars. And if the interest rate is 3%, we'd be at 19.545 of debt proceeds. You were real close, Mayor.
I rounded differently than you did.
Can you repeat that?
I have someone in my corner doing it right for me.
Thank you.
I might entirely just email this quickly to whoever is the best candidate to distribute it. But again, for a 20-year term, the range would be 13 and a half to 14.8 million, depending on the interest rate range that we're looking at. And for the same annual debt service payment over a 30-year term. Between the 3% and 4% range, the, the debt capacity or debt proceeds would run between 17 and a quarter and 19 and a half million dollars.
Councilmember Lipton?
No, that's great news. That's good information, Jim. I appreciate that. That helps quite a bit.
Of course.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Can I, can I ask you a quick question about why, why are you using? Are you, you're assuming that interest rates are going to be increasing in some way?
Well.
By the time that passes, or why 4% or 3% as opposed to the current rate?
So we prefer to give you a range because we don't know what interest rates will be in June of 2022, which is, I'd say, as soon as you're going to be in the debt market. And certainly, when we construct ballot language, we would be inclined to, to use an estimate closer to 4%. For a variety of reasons, which we can certainly discuss in more detail as, as the election question gets evaluated.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, if you're, if you want to elaborate on that now, I think that's real helpful to give us all the education.
Well. There are certain figures, you know, certain figures that have to be included in the debt ballot language. You have to tell the voters what the maximum amount of debt issuance will be. You have to tell the voters the total repayment cost or the not to exceed total repayment cost that would be permitted under the question. And you'd also tell the voters what the maximum annual debt service that would be permitted by the question. So, you know, interest rates today, we would certainly expect. A, a general obligation bond from the city of Louisville to, to be financed at a rate below two and a half. Although that rate is pretty consistent, even, you know, the yield curve is still relatively flat. We wouldn't differentiate to a large extent between 20 and 30-year rate in the market today. But when we project into ballot questions with the uncertainty of the market, that, you know. We certainly don't want to prevent the city and its voters from being able to proceed with a, a project that's been approved if we. if we got too tight in our, in our interest rate estimates that are built into these numbers. So we, within, in all these discussions we have with any school district or municipal client, we want to build in a conservative cushion in our ballot language. We also find that, that timing of the actual issuances, you know, typically varies. Sometimes the amount of debt that's approved in a particular ballot question might be broken up into two different issues, you know, in different markets essentially, two or three years apart. So we don't want to commit the city to a particular debt structure just by deciding, you know, what numbers go into the ballot question. We want to retain some flexibility for you to make subsequent decisions about things like, do we want to repay over twenty or thirty years? We want to engineer a question that allows you to keep thinking about that.
Councilmember Brown, does that answer your, your question there?
It does. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Okay, so it seems like we have laid out a path on the capital projects fund and plan to use those revenues that we've identified through unallocated revenues and by steady stating the pavement management program starting in twenty twenty-three. And so I think that moves us to the next part of the discussion around the Revitalization Commission participation. And so it seems like from the discussion we've had so far that a number of us are very interested in seeing if the Revitalization Commission would join us in working on these projects. They seem like a high priority, like they would have a big impact on eliminating blight in the district. And so I think the question that the city managers asked us is, do we need the answer to that question before July? I think the answer I've heard from people tonight is yes. And so the, the other part of the question is, is there something that, you know, we have? I, I believe I saw the president after Revitalization Commission participating by, by call in. So that's awesome to see. And then also, Councilmember Lay, of course, is our representative to the commission. And so is there, you know, something we can put forward as direction to Councilmember Lay to represent our views as a council collectively and what we would like to see from the district or what we would hope they would be able to consider? And then, you know, the timeframe is, is something that's important. So is there a need to have a joint meeting? Is there a need to have a special meeting, things like that? And so it looks like that has sparked some interest, and we'll start with Councilmember Dickinson.
Mayor, I'll defer to Councilmember Lay since he's on the LRC and let him go first.
Councilmember Lay?
I, I can't see who all has responded here because I might defer back. But what I would say, and I'm mindful that both that I'm, I'm on the LRC and my chair is in the wings there to contradict me if she, she would like to, but I'm mostly teasing her. I, I think I know that this is going to be, you know, certainly going to be an issue that's going to spark conversation questions. And I think saving that, I mean, to the extent that we want input from the LRC, and I'm, I'm, I'm all for that. I mean, I think we, if we are, if we're going to seek a commitment, you know, we want to try to provide as much information as possible. I, I would be optimistic, but the, what I would also say is that the LRC has a budget, or it, it has priorities right now. You know, we obviously have this kind of special relationship with the LRC as a council. I think the more information we can provide in terms of what we're thinking about how, both how it's likely to be financed and what it's going for, I think would be good. I have and will say in more detail as we take this conversation forward. I, I think the, the projects that we've discussed as high priority projects are transformative and just the kind of thing that urban renewal is about. I, I think that in some ways, from what I've seen my first few months on the LRC, these are, these are bigger projects. We're asking or talking about bigger dollars and even than we did in the last meeting. And so while there'll be interest, there'll be very, you know, it's going to displace potentially some of those priorities. These, the opportunity to reduce blight as a result of these projects is substantial, in my view. And so that's why we're even thinking about this. It's not just a matter of trying to find a pot of money somewhere. It's that this serves, that these, that this ballot issue and the projects that we hope to finance by it will serve the goals of, of the LRC very well, too. It's just going to require a big set of decisions. So I guess what I would say is, it would be nice, I mean, we are talking with, you know, at the LRC, we're going to be talking about this in June. I think to whatever extent we can have a discussion before that, council, you know, perhaps a special meeting with the two of us, that is, the, both council and, and the LRC. I think that would be helpful. I think it would be, a, a lot of questions can get answered. I think it is wise or prudent as a intergovernmental discussion to do things that way. Because this is a big thing we're talking about. It's not, this is not a project or a set of projects that come before us or before them, certainly every day. And, you know, why now? And why this much? And what's it going to likely do? I think there are going to be things that very much are going to be on the forefront of what the LRC and what, what's it going to cost the LRC in terms of any other priorities? That, all of those things are, are there. And I think that conversation would be really good. So that's, that's one idea. I, I think having a joint meeting between now and June would be a good thing to lay more groundwork. I can certainly suggest, as I have drafted an email already about this, I think that it would be good for the LRC to watch this meeting and get a, a bit of a sense of that. But there's nothing like being in person and talking with one another. So that's what I would suggest.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you. Thanks, Chris, for all that. And yeah, it is great to see Lexi on the, on the car right now. You know, I, I think that, you know, as I've come to understand the, the, the point or the, the purpose, I should say, of the LRC, you know, we, we talked about like, well, okay, so what would be the, the kind of project that kind of fits all of the descriptions of the purpose of, of that fund? And certainly connectivity and infrastructure, it just seems to be a slam dunk in concept. You know, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of different, you know, that, to work that out. But it seems to be a wonderful use of those funds. And I think that my, my brief tenure on council so far, the LRC and council seem, you know, a bit separated, obviously. COVID makes it difficult for us to have those conversations. As Councilmember Lay pointed out, and then being able to, you know, cooperate, collaborate, discuss, you know, initiatives and goals and things we're trying to accomplish. And I think, you know, were we meeting regularly or talking all the time? I think this would be one of those like, hey, everybody, let's push in the same direction and get this done. This is a big infrastructure project that three of the underpasses are in, in the Urban Renewal District or area. So, you know, my, I just want to throw it out, you know, I was, I guess, however you want to state it, bold enough to give a number to start the conversation last one. I'd like to throw out a number I think we're talking about as something like a half a million dollars a year. And I know it's complicated because of the length of, we, we kind of went into that, Mayor, and thank you for that piece. You know, it's complicated that the, the, that fund isn't in perpetuity, and we can't be guaranteed that money for thirty years, for instance. But I would propose that we, you know, we ask the LRC for, you know, commitment of a half a million dollars a year until there's no money left. So if that is extended another ten years or not, if the money remains for another five or ten years after it's, it's expired as far as collecting taxes, that we ask for a half a million a year until those funds run out. I think that would be a reasonable offer and a huge contribution to, I mean, as we just, I mean, that is potentially ten million dollars with the funding of this project, right? So based on the math we just went, went over a second ago. So one point five from the CIP and a half a million from the LRC could get us to two million in debt funding, which could be up to forty million in, in today's money. So, you know, I think that is, that's what I would put on the table and, and excited to hear what other people think about that request.
Thank you, Mayor Bertamaloni.
Thank you. Just reacting to my, Councilor Lay's comments, I, I think that getting together with the LRC is a great idea. And, and I think we need to have some good data that we're working with. And so, you know, one of those things to me is, you know, the collection of the LRC funds will go through twenty thirty-two. So we need to understand what that calculation is, and we need to know what the calculated cost of, you know, debt payment and all the costs that are currently that we know about. So, so we know how much there's there. I, I think that, taking a look at what was presented to the LRC a year ago, I think there's more than, than a half a million a year. And that was, that was why I suggested early on, we, we should, given the, the talk, that we're talking about three underpasses, two of which could be some of the most expensive. The one at South Boulder Road and the one at Highway forty-two in South Boulder Road, that I would like to see us consider discussion up to one and a half million a year. The money gets collected through twenty thirty-two, and from what I understand, it has to be designated by twenty thirty-two, and it can be held and spent as long as it's designated for a particular purpose. So, but it's important, it's important to know it's only for ten years. And so whatever we collect for ten years, that'll be it. Because longer, I mean, we go to a twenty or thirty year, that means that the, the, either the, the property tax has to go up or we have to come out with more from the CIP. So it's a complicated question, but I think having more data and talking about where these are located and the impact is the absolute discussion we need to have with, you know, with, in cooperation with the LRC. And I will note that our last meeting with the LRC was scheduled for June of twenty twenty, and it got COVIDed. So it's not that we're, we've been avoiding it. It's just, you know, hasn't been really a possible thing. But now is the time, and I think this is a, an amazing investment that the LRC could step up to. Thank you.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Bertamaloni on this. You know, my recollection, I was on the LRC, is the LRC will bring in revenues somewhere around two million dollars per year. And they only have obligations of maybe half a million a year. And they've struggled trying to find things to spend the money on. And part of it is they had spent money on proposed projects by private development in the urban renewal area, but that is largely dried up, you know, in terms of interest. So, you know, I, I don't want to go too low on the LRC. A half a million sounds awfully low because they will be accumulating very large balances over the next ten years. And I agree, this could be a significant contribution that they can make. I also don't want to create an environment where they run out and start spending a lot of money without really needing to. So I, I mean, I think we'd need to find the right balance. So I'm probably leaning towards a higher than a lower amount from the LRC. But I think Bertamaloni is right. We need to take a look at their financial statements, so everybody's on the same page and understand how they look. But we don't have a lot of time. And if, if we want to pull this together and pull them into it and ask for their cooperation, I mean, we just can't let this drag out into July and August and, and try to get the commitment.
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton. So I have an alternative, I'm, I'm on board with the kind of framework that Mayor Bertamaloni has laid out. But I think we should have another version that we look at, which is really front-loading payments. So, you know, we have our bond council here and like, so even if, rather than saying we're going to hold in perpetuity past twenty thirty-two, this one point five, you could front-load the payments or even use money that's in reserve now and buy down, so you're not bonding for as much. So I just, I'm not sure it actually does make sense to like, hold it in that fund after twenty thirty-two. If we could just buy, buy down the debt in the first place or, or make their payments front-loaded and our payments back-loaded or, or whatever, what have you. So I think we should consider that option, but it's not really a different approach than what Mayor Bertamaloni has laid out. So it sounds like, and I'll go to Councilmember Dickinson, I was just trying to summarize. It sounds like there's interest in having a joint meeting in talking about with the LRC philosophically, they're on board with substantially contributing to the underpasses and working through what the best path forward from a financial standpoint to do that is, if they are interested in contributing substantially to the underpass projects. Mayor Bertamaloni, I was really hoping you would nod after I said that. Would you like to frame it differently? I was trying to summarize your path forward.
I, I think we agree. I mean, you know, we could get into little nits and things here and there, but I think overall, I agree. So I, I didn't have a comment, I'm sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make sure, so it sounds like to me that we would be getting one point five million from the existing revenue sources, including sort of right sizing the pavement budget and some, some exist, some unallocated revenue, I guess, in the, in there. And then we would be getting maybe another half million to maybe a million from the, from the LRC if they agree. That would bring us up to like two to two point five million in debt, well, in, in revenue that, and we haven't even talked about a potential taxes. Is that, I, I think that's, is that the, is that where the sort of conversation sits at this point?
I, I think the only, so I think I heard different figures from the Urban Renewal District from some of the council members, and I think that's really where the uncertainty lies because we don't have the authority to.
We don't know.
So we need to have a conversation with the LRC to see if they're as excited about these projects that are transformational and identified as we are. Because we can't contribute, we can't, we do have to approve their budget every year. We do have a cooperation agreement with them. They're a fantastic partner, but we can't say what they're going to do without knowing what the board does.
Okay.
Councilmember Lipton, you might have a correction to that.
Okay.
Councilmember Lipton, you're on mute.
Sorry, Jim. I, I absolutely agree with what you just said. I also would like to refocus the conversation about other monies that are already available, including existing fund balances.
Please do.
Unless somebody's got more continuing fund.
The only, I think the only, I would say, City Manager Balster has some comments, I believe, on the Urban Renewal District section of the discussion. But so after she's made the comments, we follow up on those, then we'll turn it to you to focus the conversation. City Manager Balster?
Yeah, I just, again, recognize that, you know, there's further conversation needed around reserves and, and revenue expectations. And so, again, we're, you know, just trying to be realistic about what, what we can produce, recognizing that Kevin's in the middle of an audit. We're trying to produce, have the budget amendment on June fifteenth, which will answer some of those questions around reserves in the general funds and those kinds of things. And then also the expectation about what information we would, we would need for a June meeting with the LRC. And whether, when. what when they would have that conversation as well. So um so it just, you know, right now, we were, we were planning on having that conversation with them in June. So I just, I don't know if that can come much quicker than that. And so um we'll we'll just have to, you know, work with the finance department and staff as well um to figure out what the timing is, and we can have special meetings and all of that. Um, but um still need to put that information together.
Thank you, City Manager Bolster. Councilmember Lipton, did you want to focus on some other um revenue sources?
Excuse me. Um, sure. I mean, there was um ongoing and one-time uh sources, I think, in the general fund and even in the open space fund that we should talk about. Um, the general fund, and I know Kevin's working on this, but I think um and and maybe you can uh inform us, you, at the end of the fiscal year, and I can't remember the exact number, where were we in terms of meeting our targeted fund balances um before and after we're collecting our reimbursements from the feds?
I'm not sure. Is is that question to me?
Yes.
Okay, I I'm not sure. Uh, so are we talking about the general fund?
Yes.
Okay, so the general fund, we're expected, or we know that we're ending the year at about eleven million dollars in fund balance. And uh the minimum amount per financial policies, uh somebody already mentioned this is around three million. So so there's the excess. Now, you're you're, if you're talking about prior to grants, I think you're talking about prior to the uh what's this one called? The A R A or whatever it is, the four yeah, okay. So that's all prior to that. The uh Open Space and Parks Fund has
Wait, Kevin, before you before you move on. So I remember the CARES Act was about four million dollars in reimbursement. So roughly, the general fund is around, should be around fifteen million plus minus a little bit.
Councilmember Lipton, can I just clarify? So the CARES Act, are you talking about the CARES Act that we used last year? Or are you talking about this new four and a four and a half million dollars that we're getting this year?
Sorry, it's four and a half. Well, wait a second. It's the money that we're being reimbursed for our previous expenditures.
So that's included in that eleven million dollar number already. But what's not included is the new money from this year.
Um, okay, I didn't realize the eleven million because when did the CARES Act money come in?
Yeah, uh, yeah, that was only nine hundred thousand. That was the
Okay, sorry, I'm about the four and a half million.
And so that's not, so that's not that called the CARES Act, just for clarification. That's called something else, like American Recovery Act, I think.
Yeah, okay. So uh and then uh you did mention the targeted fund balance. You told us about the minimum. What what is the targeted general fund?
Uh, just so I don't have to um round it, let me get you the exact amount. So for the general fund for uh period ending in twenty twenty, the target is uh three million, four hundred and eighty thousand.
So around three and a half million?
Yeah, about three and a half million.
Okay, so the minimum was about three million. Our target is about three point five million.
Right, the minimum was actually two point six.
Okay. Okay, and we have somewhere between arguably eleven and fifteen million, you know, in in that fund balance. And then um on open space, I uh wish I had s- I had the graph in front of me in terms of the growth of the fund balance. Um, can you just describe a little bit what we anticipated the growth to be? Because I I I do not believe we're using all the money we're transferring in each year. So the fund balance must be growing.
Well, the the, excuse me, the fund balance ending twenty twenty was approximately three point two million. That grew about three hundred thousand from the previous year. That's expected to go down a little bit based on uh expenditures that the um that that we're projecting down to around two million in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. So we're actually projecting uh decline over the next five, six years.
Okay, and and to clarify, I'm not suggesting we use it for this purpose because I know we need some money for open space acquisitions, and we've agreed that those funds would come out of the open space fund budget uh fund balance as well as general fund balance. And I know, you know, even what we say about minimum and targeted, you know, we've kind of got an agreement that maybe we need some more in in the in particularly the general fund fund balance. Okay, thank you.
So Councilmember Lipton, do you want to put any additional comment after? I mean, you went through that exercise. I really appreciate it. Thank you for that. And so were you suggesting that we use some general fund money to contribute to not having to take on so much debt on the front end?
Well, I mean, I think we've been searching for a way to productively use the general fund fund balance in uh to make investments, you know, in the community. Um, we've this this fund balance over time has grown um by a large amount every year, despite our planning and our efforts to keep it constrained. Part of that is the issue of the turnback, which I'm hoping we're we're getting some traction on. But, you know, the fund balance in the general fund continues to grow. Now, I also know it's our flexibility money. And opportunities come up or emergencies or things that, you know, you just can't budget for. It's nice to have money in the general fund in order to uh be able to appreciate those opportunities. But I think we've also been trying, struggling for a way to reduce the overall amount by a certain amount uh by making uh investments. And this, to me, seems like it would be a good investment. So no, I don't have a specific number in mind. I'm just putting it out there for, you know, some conversation and see if there is a number.
Thank you. That's, thank you. That's very helpful. It looks like there's some discussion around that, Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, I agree with Councilor Lipton that we should be looking at um, you know, if there are excess reserves there, finding a way to invest those. I I would like to have a a policy discussion around, you know, right now, we're calculating um and Director Watson can correct me, but it's twenty percent of operating expenses to get the three point, three point five million. Um, but we're not taking into account some other things. Uh, we know we're going to have an obligation uh at some point in time for four million for Highway forty-two is our match. Um, I've always spoken about this idea, should we calculate a rainy day fund? Uh, we have used uh, you know, reserves since I've been on council a number of times for unplanned or or open space or or something like that. So I think there is, there is some portion of that could be invested there, and I would be supportive, but I'd like to have a good discussion around that calculation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so I think we've had a good, I think it's very clear on the C I P with the one and a half. I think it's very clear on what we would like to get from a conversation with the Revitalization Commission to encourage as much participation as they would be willing to give. Um, and I, so I think the next place where we are in the conversation, unless people want to um elaborate on, oh, sorry, Councilmember Dickinson may want to do this. Unless people want to elaborate on Councilmember Lipton's point about putting some of the money from the general fund towards this project, um I think we would be remiss if we didn't talk about some of the debt scenarios. Uh, because even if we are bonding against our existing revenue, we still would be taking on debt, and we have our experts here to answer questions for us and take us through scenarios. So that's where I think we'll head next, unless Councilmember Dickinson um brings up something on this current topic. Councilmember Dickinson.
No, I just wanted a clarification on, are we making a specific request to the L R C or just as you kind of stated it, like, as much as they're willing? Are we, are we trying to paint a picture of what we really need? Or are we just saying, hey, whatever you could do would be great?
Thoughts from the group? Do we want to go in with a specific ask, or do we want to try to encourage them to participate? Councilmember Lay?
Um, I think probably it would be wise for us to look at their numbers and their current commitments before we make that um draw that conclusion. I I think it would be between now and a meeting I I've suggested, a meeting. Uh, I know that there's some, I mean, uh, the city manager and I, you know, I know we've got a meeting scheduled in June. Philosophically, we talked about the idea of having a meeting perhaps before that time to talk about this a little bit. But I think between now and that meeting, if that's what the council would like to do, that we could probably come to, you know, we could, we could probably uh solidify our thoughts a little bit more rather than do it in a little bit of a vacuum right now. That's what I would say.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. I I have maybe a alternate proposal that ties into what Councilmember Lay suggested. So um in the past, like, we've looked at projects. So, I mean, we have three projects in particular here. We're talking about asking for participation in. Um, you know, so we know roughly what those three projects will cost. Um, and so, you know, they are in the Urban Renewal District. They are transformative. And so I would like to, I would like to encourage them to participate in the maximum amount that they to the maximum extent that they will on those projects. They're perfect candidates. They're things that our staff will be working on. We're not just creating work to create work. Um, they will have a huge impact on the redevelopment of the properties around them or have the potential to do that and to eliminate blight. So I I would like us to ask them to participate to the maximum extent that they feel comfortable and capable of doing.
Well, yeah, put that way, that's perfectly fine. Um, are you talking about a particular figure, though?
I mean, no, no, because like we don't have a particular figure today to talk about.
No, I know that. I mean, that's what I'm that's, I guess, what I'm suggesting. Uh, we want to perhaps avoid, not because I mean, we don't want to sell ourselves short. We don't want to sell ourselves uh too long either. So I I I agree with what you've just said. I think that's, that's great. I believe from my standpoint as a single member of the L R C that these, that the projects we're talking about are transformative. They're the kinds of things that are right square within the uh mandate and mission of the L R C and I can't speak for them, but I can certainly pitch what you just said and will. And I think the rest of us, you know, we we owe it to to do this because this could be, you know, it it certainly would be the biggest collaboration between the city and the L R C on a set of projects that we've had in a long time, maybe ever. So I agree with your language.
All right, thank you. And so I think the next part of the discussion is around debt financing scenarios. So I understand there's some disagreement from council members on whether that would all solely be internal from sales tax revenue that we've just identified, or if it would be a combination of sales tax revenue and property tax. And I believe that answer will come more clear once we understand the level of interest of the Urban Renewal District and once we understand from Director Coar the final, you know, uh, cost estimates in June. And we have that discussion, but I think in any case, it's worth, you know, while we have our experts here asking him questions and understanding debt financing scenarios for the projects and understanding about the ballot language, because even if we use all internal sources of funding, if we ask to bond against it, my understanding is that we'll go to the voters for that. And there'll be some decisions that we have to make as a group to ensure that we have enough capacity to complete the projects. And they'll tell us about whether there's one question or two and exactly how you would want to word it and where we could be more conservative or less conservative. So I think that's the next portion of the conversation. And so just before we dive into that, um I'm just going to ask members of the public if they have any comments on this agenda item. All right, thank you. Not seeing any, I'm going to turn it over to and I'm so sorry, City Manager Bolster. I wrote down on my notes who I was moving up through on these different sections. Uh, and so I'll just hand it over to you to hand over to the appropriate person.
Yeah, uh, so we we can hand it to Jim if you just, Jim, want to just go over those uh pages um that you provided on the debt financing scenario, just the highlights. And Kevin, feel free to jump in if there's anything we're, we need to include.
Thank you, City Manager.
Let's see, I I'm was hoping to share my screen with you, um but maybe um Kevin can put up the um the memo that I'd sent around that's basically about the uh election parameters and and some of this was, I think, came up pretty clearly in um in our discussion, but um I'll just review, and I think it'll be more productive to um um have Kim Crawford from Butler Shino talk about specific language that might be used in different um approaches to the financing. But very quickly, um using the fifty million dollar, thank you so much, Kevin, the fifty million dollar um uh, you know, target, a few things that we wanted to call everyone's attention to, particularly if we were looking to a new mill levy for debt repayment, which would be the case in a fifty million dollar scenario. If uh I put several dates together in the center section here, simply um that um, you know, the language that's um you know, presented to voters in November this year will set these limitations. Uh, if we were um planning to sell bonds in June of twenty twenty-two, we would not necessarily have levied um new mills for debt service to be collected in twenty twenty-two. But if there is a debt service payment and we anticipate that there would be one interest payment um coming due in twenty twenty-two, we would um we're showing you an example of how we would build that into the debt uh issuance uh in what we call capitalized interest. So just, so you're, we wanted to make sure that at least was um presented and considered uh as refinements um are made to the ballot language, particularly in in the amount of debt that's asked for. So those dates really serve that purpose to show um why the timing sequence might increase the amount of the borrowing if, in fact, the city chooses to use capitalized interest and to fund it through the debt issue. Um, the structure of the debt as we've modeled it um would show fifty million for the new projects. Um, the capitalized interest calculation based again on our um projection here of four percent interest would be one six-month equivalent or about a million dollars worth. And then we would also account for an estimate of the financing costs that would run between currently and conservatively four hundred thousand and maybe four hundred and twenty-five thousand. So our our um total debt requirement as we've presented it here amounts to fifty-one million, four hundred and twenty thousand. And then in this bottom section, um, we've broken this out into um in particular, some of the um um T A B A requirements that have to be referred to. And then the mill levy equivalent. And first of all, um, I've made an error. So the correct dates for the twenty-year financing term, that a twenty-year term would run through twenty forty-two, not thirty-two. And the thirty-year term would run through twenty fifty-two, um, not forty-two. So please take note of that. But um, again, we'll discuss the reason for using a four percent estimate, but with that interest rate assumption, our total cost projection over the twenty-year repayment term is now seventy-six point seven million dollars. And that will appear or would appear in the ballot language um as a not-to-exceed amount generally. So again, um, part of the reason for the conservatism is we don't want to get locked out or trapped out of um being able to fund the projects if interest rates do get higher. The corresponding annual debt service um for the fifty million dollar issue would be three million, seven eighty-six approximately. And um, again, although we understand and expect there there may be contributions to debt service from other sources than the mill levy, we would still be presenting or creating a question in this situation where um, the city has the authority to levy the full amount of mills that it would um require to pay debt service. Um, and it would make the subsequent um contributions to our debt service. Um, I'd say discretionary, but we want to make sure I'd say discretionary, but we want to make sure if we are creating a security that is based on property tax increases alone, that we authorize the correct amount of mills. And, and that does set up, I think, some communication questions about how you talk to the public about how to approach that. But the equivalent of the 3,786 and based on today's existing current assessed valuation is 5.45 mills. You might choose to go ahead and project the mills based on an assessed value that would be appropriate for a collection year 2023 in this example. So mill levy requirement could go down because you certainly expect in the next cycle, the reassessment, your values to go up. Then the corresponding values for the 30 year issue, the total cost would increase to 90,239. The annual cost, in fact, that we would expect is lower, 2,976. And that equates to the 4.30 mills. As I mentioned earlier, if you were dialed into strictly a 20 year or a 30 year program, we could approach the ballot language using the, the specific numbers, but if you were still taking time and you're really thinking all the way out to perhaps June of 2022, what your preference would be, sometimes we would use the higher numbers from either of these projections. So if you use a, a total repayment cost of 90.2 million and a max annual repayment cost of 3.7 million, you'd be maintaining the flexibility to ultimately issue either a 20 or a 30 year structure. But if you tighten down either of those parameters, you're, you're much closer to committing to one of those structures now. You know, which, you know, you'll be finalizing ballot language probably in late August or September, if not before. And, and so, you know, again, we encourage you to think about the flexibility that you want to make sure you have. Of course, the numbers get bigger and that, you know, creates concerns about voter acceptance, but we certainly would encourage you to, again, protect the outcome by staying conservative in the ballot question. And Kevin, let's flip to the, the other PDF. And actually the second, that's the one that, that's more helpful, I think. So here's a more detailed projection that corresponds to the numbers we've just summarized for the 20 year versus the 30 year projection. And it does show an annual contribution here. We've identified sales news tax, but just to show the, let's say the net debt service that would be, you know, attributable to the property tax portion, if in fact these one and a half million dollar annual contributions are made. So although the ballot languages we have it, our, our thinking would be appropriate, would still need to address the, the total or the gross debt service payments, which are on the left hand column of each of these two tables. When you came to year 2022 and are levying mills for collection in 2023, and you were certain you had another million and a half from other sources, you know, you would only levy for these net amounts, which are what you can see in the right hand columns. So you know, again, the ballot language would need to provide the authority and the flexibility to, to make it work, make the financings work without any contributions as we anticipate the way you would proceed under the approach prior to tonight's discussion. But in fact, you would really be able to go, the annual mill levies and the annual amounts that have to be generated from property tax levy would be reduced by the million and a half dollars that we've projected here. So let me just stop. I'm not sure, you know, I'm happy to take more questions. I think some of this will make more sense. If, if, you know, when we move into Kim's alternative ballot language formulations, but let's just pause, Mayor, and if there are any questions directly to these structures or these examples that we've provided, we can certainly take care of them now before we ask him to step into her, her portion.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members to this point? I don't see any questions. I'd be interested in a philosophical discussion with council members. You've run several scenarios with a 20 year payback and a 30 year payback. And these underpasses are really hundred year improvements. We have very old underpasses still in operation today that require very little maintenance. And so from my perspective, doing a 30 year payback makes a lot of sense just because people may live in the community for, say, seven years. So if you put the entire burden, you know, your, your front, there's a generational equity conversation to be had. So I do understand that overall you pay less in interest and debt. But the question is who's paying over what period of time? And I don't think it makes sense to do longer than a 30 year term, even though the asset does last longer than 30 years. I just don't think it's typical. And I think people would look at it and be sort of like, why are you doing something beyond 30 years? And so from my perspective, I, I would be ready to eliminate the 20 year scenario and just from now on, only talk about the 30 year scenario. But I don't know if other council members have strong feelings. And it's just, there's a philosophical policy question here around the length of the bond that we move forward with. And I wonder if folks have opinions and would like to move forward with that. Councilmember Lipton.
So Mayor, I generally agree with you on that. I think what we're going to have to do is certainly I don't think we're going to do it this summer. Look at the yield curve to see where the difference in interest rates are for a 20 year versus a 30 year. So that's something I'm sure we'll get some advice on. But generally, I think you want to try to match the maturity of your, your debt to the useful life of the asset. So in that regard, I do agree.
Thank you for that. That was, that was really helpful, Councilmember Lipton. Do we have, do we have to decide the length of the bottom when we go to the ballot measure? I mean, I think we do just for the payment schedule.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be defined specifically in any of the required language, but the, the total debt service requirement and the annual debt service requirement are going to be based on, you know, one structure or a combination of two structures that might still be under consideration. But unless you want it to say it, you wouldn't have to say, you know, the tax will, you know, last no longer than 20 or 30 year.
Thank you very much. Mayor Proton Maloney.
Yes, Jim, if I understood you correctly, when you were talking about this, you were suggesting using the total cost for 30 years and the maximum annual cost using the 20 year so that in 2022, we would have that flexibility to, given interest rates and everything to make that decision. So didn't you propose that flexibility?
I, I definitely, you, you heard that correctly. At least I wanted it to be understood that you had that option.
Yeah.
Through other clients, we, you know, again, I, I'm reminded of the Boulder Valley Schools election in 2014 when there, you know, there was one election, but there were three separate bond issuances and we were projecting out five or six years into that much more uncertainty in the interest rate environment. So again, the theme is flexibility and unless you feel like the the election itself is put at risk because a voter might choose not to support a five mill election, but might approve a four mill election, you know, you know, that sort of risk is not, you know, you might be stepping into that sort of political risk by inflating any of these variables. But you know, again, you have the, you have to think in those terms to maintain the absolute flexibility to make your financing decisions as Councilman Lipton was thinking already about the yield curve. You know, with the information we have when we're entering the market.
Right. So that's, all right, I'm, I'm on board with trying to match it, but I, I think that the way Jim laid it out, we have that flexibility and we don't have to make that decision tonight or not until probably next spring.
Well, I think what Jim was talking about is part of the discussion for tonight. So maybe I'm just misunderstanding, but like on the rec center, we definitely did not do that because it would have been such a large number to include both of those. I think it goes exactly to Jim's point around like, are you going to get the, like, if, if we don't accurately reflect that we're planning on paying a large portion of this from existing funds and you put the whole five mills on there, it's going to be a very different question than if you say.
And it is just difficult to communicate these nuances in a public communication, you know, when again, you're, you're trying to establish the trust of the voters and assure them that the tax increases will be minimized.
Right. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks. Just a quick question. You may have said this, but I think it was really helpful when we were able to say, you know, what is 1 million of debt get us or debt burden get us? What is one mill cost? And again, whether we talk about an average, like a 500,000 home or 700,000, I think we're working now on a a typical $700,000 home. What does one mill cost per year for a $700,000 home?
$700,000 home, I think the residential ratio is now established at 7.25%, although several people can correct me, but.
I think it's. I think it's 7.15.
I think we, we calculated that last week. I'm sorry, this is Kevin. And we came up with $70 on a 1 million dollar house for one mill. This is about $70 a year. So a $700,000 house would be 70% of that.
About $50 for a $700,000 home.
That's right. That's a good, good equivalent.
Okay. So again, of course, if, if we're talking about a half a million dollar home, it's $35. If we're talking about a $700,000 home, it's $49. A million dollar home, it's $70. So again, people, you know, residents can kind of figure out what that means for them. But that helps me understand like, okay, so for, because my understanding is every mill that we charge, if you will, would get us roughly $10 million. And I'm going off of super rough numbers, but you know, four to five mills gets us to our 50 million number, depending on where we end up. But I, I can't remember. I'm not looking it now, but in the, in the four and a half to five and a half mills, it ends us where we need to be, which is the 50 million. So it's about one mill gets us 10 million. And one mill costs a homeowner who owns a $700,000 home roughly $50 a year. So just as we like, oh, well, maybe we need two mills. Maybe three mills, like you could just multiply. Okay. Well, that would be 100 or 150, right? Like per $700,000 home, right? So that, that helps me a lot and I appreciate just trying to get my, my head around those like multipliers. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. And I lost my participant panel. Next, I'm accused Councilmember Lay.
Yes, thank you. And thanks, Jim. I, I wanted to just clarify one thing because as I, as I understand it, we can't in ballot language reflect what we believe. The, you know, the, how do I say it?
I'd be able to anticipate this question. Whether we can give a current market estimate, you know, and then document that in the ballot language, I believe, Councilman.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and Kim may have examples of how that can be done. The thing that is an absolute requirement is that we have to establish the maximums and that if your, if the interest rate market leaves you behind, you, you don't, you know, you, you will have regretted not having been more conservative in those estimates.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, part of this is I, I, it's impossible not to think, how am I going to view this as a voter? And we, we'll get, we'll get there. But I mean, because, you know, when you look at five, another five and a half mills or whatnot, that's, that's going to strike people as a lot. We don't, of course, our assessed valuations keep going up and up and up and that will, will help us in this too, but there's just some complexity there.
And the five and a half mills covers the entire thing. And we've already talked about using one and a half million of our own money and everything like that. So just for folks watching at home, like the numbers that are being turned around are to cover the entire thing, which we've already talked about not doing. And so I'm looking at the time. It's 9:25. This is a very important conversation, so we're going to keep it going. But if everybody can just tighten up our questions to make sure that we ask the experts what we need to know and we are going to continue on tonight. So we need to get through this discussion with Jim and ask him all the questions we have and then understand a little bit about the ballot language from Kim. And then we'll move on to the next agenda item. So are there other questions for Jim this evening? Kyle, Councilmember Brown, sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Can you, I, I, and this is a question maybe for Kevin, actually. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to put the context, the number of mills here in context of things that we have passed recently. What, what were the number of mills that we passed for the, the rec center?
Yeah, I believe, okay, that was a limited, we limited the mills not to exceed, I think, Jim, wasn't it 3.35 mill?
That's right, Kevin, 3.35.
Right. But we've only, we've only assessed 2.75 and we project that to actually go down over the period of years as our assessed valuation goes up. So that's one of those cases where we had to go to the voters with ballot language that went up to 3.35 mills, but we never really anticipated hitting that level. And, and obviously we didn't.
Okay. So, so if we're looking for, you know, just to some degree, this, this conversation depends in a large degree on like how many mills we would have to get depends on one, how many over, how many underpasses, what's the total price tag we think that will cost? And then whether we can get a certain amount of money from the LRC. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fagie.
Yes, thank you, Mary. My question is pretty quick. I was just wondering, you were talking about how much per mill a residence would pay? How much per mill would a business have to pay?
The, the ratios now are almost four times higher for commercial property. So if you have a $700,000 residential property compared to a $700,000 commercial property, I would say multiply the residential figures by four and you'd be close. It's 29% residential, or excuse me, the commercial assessment rate is 29% and residential is now down to 7.15. Okay, thank you.
All right. So I think there were no actual things. We had to decide on that portion of the meeting tonight. So we're on to ballot language and questions and comments around that. And so Kim Crawford's joining us to talk to us a little bit about that. Hi, Kim. Good to see you.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm glad to be with you. As I've been listening to our conversation, I'm questioning whether our ballot questions are really addressing what, what you want. But we'll go with what we have so far. When we met with, with staff and with Jim and Air to discuss really options for any, any ballot question, as you know, cities have to, the voters to increase debt. So the first option that I presented is what's called an unlimited tax general obligation bond. And that's like what all of your school districts impose. Your school districts have no options for other types of debt, except for maybe like lease purchase financings, which are really not debt, but unlimited tax means that you are going to increase your, your mill levy in an unlimited rate, but not an unlimited amount so that you can pay your bonds back. It's, it's a full faith and credit promise to the, to the bondholders. So so what that unlimited as to rate means is if, if you're looking at the ballot question that's on page 463, we have a repayment cost of up to blank and tax increases by not more than blank. Those are numbers that cannot be exceeded for Tabor purposes. So that's why Jim's proposing. So that's why Jim's proposing um different numbers at different levels, so that you have maximum amounts that no matter what the interest rate ends up being or your term ends up being, you're not going to be, you're not going to exceed those parameters, or you have to go back to the voters again, because Tabor says you cannot exceed those for any reason. So if you have a one million dollar maximum annual repayment cost, um, the unlimited as to rate means that the um mill levy can go to five mills or to two mills or to three mills, whatever mill produces enough to pay those bonds back, but it can never exceed the dollar amount that's in the Tabor question. So that's an unlimited tax general obligation bond. And that gets you really the highest or the like it's the lowest interest rate in the market when we go out to actually sell the bonds to the public. In in the ballot question, so the first paragraph of the ballot question is what's required by Tabor. So that really can't be changed under any circumstances, because that's that's what the Constitution says. Every ballot question in the state of Colorado has to start with. Shall taxes be increased? Shall debt be increased? And what are the maximums? I have added um numbered paragraphs, which um clarify and hopefully hopefully make it a little bit easier for your voters when they read it to see what you're doing. So the first bullet is going to be what you're going to be doing with these bonds. And and again, it's transportation improvements, um including but not limited to. And I know you've had the discussion whether you're going to have six or three, this is where you would go with that. And you would explain to the voters what you're going to do with the money. The second bullet is that these are going to be general obligations and they're going to be evidenced by notes, bonds, or other multiple fiscal year financial obligations, um payable from property taxes and other available city revenues as determined by council. So our intent here clearly is to allow you to use other revenue to pay these bonds back. But but as as you've been discussing and as Jim specified, you're going to need to ask the voters for the total amount of your project, because what you ask for in debt is all you can get. So if you decide you want to go with the three projects and it's not fifty million, um that's fine. But what what you have in your ballot question is is what you get. So so again, you can work back and figure out how much you actually need to raise your mill levy, if at all, to pay these bonds back. But we're just allowing you a flexibility in this ballot question to pledge or to to pay it with really any revenue of the city that you determine after the election and on an annual basis, when you do your budgets and your appropriation resolutions and ordinances. The bullet three is the property tax increase is not expected to exceed X mills. So we're trying to tell the voters here that although you're not expecting to exceed, maybe it's five mills, you can, if you need to, increase it more than five mills. That makes it, again, an unlimited general obligation. But you're also telling the voters that you're really not expecting to exceed a a certain number of mills. Um, and then the rest of that bullet and the bullet number four um relate mostly to just um how the bonds are repaid. Um redemption premiums and kind of refunding information that is in state law that allows you some flexibility in your ballot questions. And is very similar to what you had in the twenty seventeen ballot question. Again, this is the unlimited general obligation tax option. Um, does anybody have any questions on on that option?
Councilmembers have questions? I see no questions.
Okay, moving on, thank you. Option number two is a limited tax bond, which is what you did um last time with your rec center. The limited tax bond um gets you a little bit of higher interest rate, because again, it's not you're not telling the 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 bondholders that you can increase the taxes in any amount to pay these bonds back. You're saying, hey, we're we want to issue this debt, but we're only going to increase the bond, the your mill levy up to five mills. So when the bondholders buy these bonds, they know that they're going to get five mills. If if the um debt service exceeds five mills, or I mean, if the five mills doesn't pay your bonds back, five mills is all you get, five mills is all they're pledging. So this is a limited tax deal. But the rest of the boat, the ballot question is kind of similar. Number one being, you know, the purposes, what you're going to do with the money. Number two, that it's going to be um a limited tax general obligation bond payable from the limited mill levy of five mills. And then I have added, and other existing city revenues is determined by the council. Again, we are allowing you the flexibility to use that one point five million in sales and use tax revenue if you want to. And but again, it's not going to be required, because we we want to make sure that you have the flexibility to do this ballot question without making that specific pledge. And then items three and the last paragraph are are again the same. So are there any questions on the limited tax bond?
Any questions from folks on the limited tax bond? I see a couple people moving, Mayor Perez and Maloney.
Could could you help us understand how we selected the liminous, a limited tax general bond obligation for the rec center, what our thinking was there?
Um, maybe I I did not work on that ballot question, I believe um Jim did. So I don't really remember, and and Kevin as well, what your, I don't know what your thoughts were on the limited tax.
Sure, let me just weigh in on this real quickly. I'm actually um the rec center bond issue was done, uh it actually uh the the structure was the same as the library tax. Library bonds were issued in two thousand and four, both were limited tax um G O bonds. And um although I'll say they are less common in the marketplace, um my sense was it was simply that clarity in the communication with the voters, cities' confidence that the cap that was applied to um their authority to levy the mills was going to protect them and not require them to divert um funds that they had not intended to apply to debt service. But but I think the preference really developed around uh and based on the clarity, the communication that at least where you're saying, you know, we have the authority to raise the mill levy by an unlimited amount. There's a little bit of a different reaction if if instead you say it will be raised by no more than three point three five mills in the case of the rec center bonds. And and we actually, um although I'm sure I was extremely cautious during the process in twenty sixteen about the rating result, the rating outcome on the twenty seventeen rec center bonds corresponded to what the rating would have been for an unlimited tax G O. There's still a possibility that an investor might chose not to buy those bonds unless um yield were higher, but we had a great result from standard imporers and and the rating on those bonds was um no different from what the rating would have been had you done an unlimited tax G O pledge.
All right, thank you.
And at the risk of going to your your metropolitan districts, as as you know, they always issue the limited tax bonds. And the 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 reasoning, I think, is kind of the same in this situation, but your mill levy is much, much um lower. Is you're limiting the mill levy because you want to tell the the residents that this is what they're going to have to pay, and they have certainty, as as Jim said, so they know that they're not going to ever have to pay more than five mills.
Thank you. So on on this version with the limited tax bond, and this may be for the city manager, and I I know she's done a lot of these, is this where we would have like a resolution instead of listing all the projects? And then a ranking to show like we'll go as far down the list as we can?
Well, I think I'll let I'll let Kim answer that question, but yes, I think in any of these scenarios, we'd probably want to do that, because we're not getting specific in the ballot language of um where we say transportation related projects, and then we get more specific in a resolution, which again, does give you some flexibility. So Kim, do is if you want to add on to that?
Sure, and Kim, so so just so I ask my question upfront, so you make sure to, just so you you could say something like four underpasses, and then the they're actually detailed out in the resolution. And you would go and you would somehow be able to say how far in the list you could go, and then if you had excess money, it would somehow in the resolution describe what you could spend that excess money on?
Well, we have to allow in the ballot question, so you you might, if you want to look at um the second the the first bullet point, I say for um for transportation's improvements, including but not limited to. So that including but not limited to um means that whatever you say in this ballot question in in that paragraph, including means you have to do what you say there, but not limited to means that once you do those things, you can do more things. So so we certainly recommend that you are as I I guess as inclusive here as um in inclusive be meaning meaning just just transportation improvements or underpass improvements or street improvements, things that you can um do a lot of things with without any more specificity specificity. Because as as Jim can tell you and Kevin and Heather's, you know, things don't always work out the way you want them to sometimes. Sometimes you run into um issues with um environmental concerns or or things that just put a damper on your project that you don't anticipate. So you don't want to be delayed and you don't want to have things in your ballot question that you can't complete, that you need to complete. So what a lot of um cities and towns do, or I don't know if a lot, but they sometimes do, is adopt an accompanying resolution and say, this is really what our intent is. We intend to pay one, pay the bonds, one point five million annually of these bonds with sales and use tax revenue. We intend to prioritize these projects. The resolution is non-binding, you know, it it's doesn't bind future councils. The ballot question is what's what's really binding, but it does allow you that flexibility to um to make some rankings and make some determinations and prioritize projects and tell the voters really what you're thinking and how you think you're going to pay for this. And then also the the harder part is the communication that you go out with to the public to kind of tell them that this is what we want to do, these are our thoughts, we don't intend on ever imposing more than five mills to pay for this. You know, the the city is going to put in one point five million annually, um we're going to go to the Urban Renewal Authority. We're going to try to get as much money as we can from other sources and from grants. But this is what we need to ask, because this is what our project is going to cost. This is what Tabor requires, so this is an all encompassing, all encompassing ballot question. So it really is more on the communication. And I think Jim had mentioned that you need to make this determination by August, but it's actually early July. Um, because under your your charter, you have to have the two reading ordinance. So so you really have a couple months um or a month really to finalize your your ballot questions and decide which direction you're going to go, um first reading, second reading. And there can certainly be changes between first and second reading, but I think you you should really start focusing in on exactly what you want to do and what you want want to ask the voters to do.
Thank you. Thank that very much, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, my third option, which um I I think is the riskier option, but it's it's with two ballot questions, and that's that's why it's riskier, is because you do run the risk of um voters saying yes to one and no to the other. Um, the way that I have them drafted right now is that they are contingent, if one doesn't pass, the other one doesn't get implemented, even if it passes, you may or may not want to do that, because then you you do limit um like like the second question is your sales tax question, and I say without increasing the sales taxes. And of course, I mean, I don't know if of course, but I haven't run into a without increasing taxes question that has not passed. So so that would have, I think, a higher likelihood of passing. The tricky part here, and I know you you've discussed it is is you have to determine how much one point five million dollars in sales and use tax revenue is going to produce. And that is the amount that you ask in this question. So this would maybe be a twenty million dollar debt question. Um, you still have to have the annual, you know, the the total increase, but you're going to pay it with sales and use tax revenue, and we're not going to increase your existing, your existing sales and use tax rate. Accompanying that would be either an unlimited tax or a limited tax bond. And I have it structured in in your form as a as a limited tax. And that would be for the remainder of the project. So if you do twenty in sales tax, you would do thirty in um in property taxes. And and again, it's structured the same way as the as a limited tax, saying we're going to impose thirty million in debt, five mills or whatever the lower mill number would be. But they would be two separate questions um asked separately. And again, if if you wanted to not have them contingent, if one passed, you could at least start part of the project and and do what was contemplated and what you could do with twenty million if the sales tax passed. Or you could make them contingent, um which I believe you did with your um your rec center, however, I think that was for an operating expense and not um two different debt questions. I think what you had was, can we increase debt? And if the debt question passes, can we also increase um property taxes to pay to to maintain the the rec center?
Any questions?
I think I think it was sales tax to maintain the rec center.
It it was sales tax.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's late, thanks.
All right, so um those are the different structures that you've outlined for us. Um, and so I think at this time, our two council members uh want to hone in on a structure. So there are pros and cons to each one. I think as I think even as we move forward, if we determine that we don't need any property tax, you know, we still need to answer this question, even if we're using all of our existing sales tax. So I think we should have a debate, uh if anyone has a preference or um philosophy that we should follow on one of these. I I think, you know, just not seeing any hands, so just to open discussion, I think it does make it easier for voters to understand the maximum amount of mills that they could be up against, and so I would, if in I was in a vacuum and had no other debate, would lean toward option two, the limited tax obligation bond. Other discussion, Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I think, thank you, Mayor. I I was going to say, I was going to say option number two. Um, but that's that's what I would, uh, that's what I would figure. I think the certainty for voters is important. And whether or not we decide that we need to, we want to go with some uh additional um revenue raising, um, you know, from through through a property tax or whatever, I think that's a a good way to go.
Mayor Perez and Maloney?
Uh, at this point, I lean towards option two. I think it's, it just feels like a cleaner way to be looking at it. So that's just kind of an opinion off the top of my head.
Any other discussion? All right. So um things are moving quickly, so we just all need to remember that the next time we have this discussion that we're agreeing upon moving forward with a limited obligation bond to hone in on the language and to continue working forward. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I I would just add, Mayor, um so Kim, is is that, is that are there any other questions that you have as we continue to work with bond council moving forward at this point?
Kathleen, were you asking me?
I was asking you, sorry.
Okay, you know, I I think again, where we proceed from here is if we focus on option number two, is just really deciding how much you want and um and then working back to really deciding kind of on an annual basis, and and you know, Heather and Kevin would um would assist with this when that when you're doing your budgets and annually, how much sales tax revenue do you have available that you um can use to pay the the next year's debt service? And then that would be the property tax that you would impose, and then you would just be limited to whatever, it can't exceed whatever the limited mill levy is that you put in the ballot question.
Thank you. City Manager Ballser, does that answer and address the question we need on this topic for this evening?
I think so. I'm 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 not sure. There's lots 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 of questions, I think, still, and I, you know, ultimately, the the amounts are going to be really important, and I guess at some point, we're 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 going to have to, we we we're going to have to make a decision, because it's going to dictate how um what we bring forward to you on July thirteenth, and there's only, we're going to need some time to prepare that. So um we're we're planning to have a conversation in early June. I think it's maybe the June first meeting um in response to um to bring some of the design information back. Again, um I just want to be clear, it's 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 not final, it's not, um you know, it's it's based on the time we have to be responsive at this. just want to be clear, it's, it's, it's not final. It's not, you know, it's, it's based on the time we have to be responsive at this point to where we think design is going and cost estimates. So with the time allocated. So, but with, that's our next plan for discussion. And then, you know, that may dictate again further discussions about dollar amounts.
Thank you. That sounds like a great path forward. Yep, Councilmember Lipton.
Not only complicate this, but just as a point of interest, what is the implication of using Urban Renewal Authority financing for, for this in terms of the language in the bond? Not the language in the bond, it's language in the ballot. Because if in fact it runs out in 10 years, how does that work into all of this?
Well, you, you couldn't issue a bond with them. They would have to do their own bond. The, the fortunate thing is that they don't need to have an election. So, so that makes a little bit more flexibility, but they would really do their own financing. So whatever you would, whatever agreement you would come to with them, you know, I, I think we would have to have some sort of IGA. This is what you want to do. This is what we want to do. And then I, I believe you would need to make the decision as to whether you wanted, you, the, the city wants to still have a ballot question for the full amount. Because if you don't, then, then you can't do all your projects. But again, you could tell your voters or, and, and just your constituents that you're exploring options with the Urban Renewal Authority.
I mean, Kim, couldn't there be a memorandum of understanding with so that we have a payment schedule and we would then be able to know what term we would be repaid on and lower the overall cost of the project?
You could. I mean, that, that would just be however you wanted to move forward. But if you, if you come to an agreement with them pretty quickly, that they will contribute $10 million or something to that effect. You could certainly address that and, and, and we could put another bullet in the ballot question that that the project is going to be that we, we could do it two, two different ways. We could still have the $50 million project. And then you could say that 10 million of it is going to be paid for by the Urban Renewal Authority. Or you could just do a $40 million project. And then have the memorandum of understanding, which is probably the better way to do it because then you're just not asking for the 50 million, you're asking for a smaller amount.
For the question number two, which is the preferred form, as of now, there's no specific reference to sales tax revenue as a source of repayment or, and so really the structure of that ballot question allows the city on a year-to-year basis, consider what other sources of revenue it has, whether it's sales tax or urban renewal funds, before it sets the mill levy for the following year. And so it's not quite as explicit about those other sources, but, but you're still able to apply them in your annual mill levy formulation.
Yeah, and you know, they don't, they wouldn't have to issue bonds. They could just say they're going to pay you X dollars per year toward this project.
It looks like Mayor Proton may want to add in something as well. And then I'll come back to Councilmember Lipton, Mayor Proton Maloney?
I'm, I'm not sure I do. I mean, I was reading paragraph two, under option two, the very last line and from other available revenue of the city. So to me, that would fit was an agreement with the LRC for whatever period of time, for whatever amount. Am I correct in that statement?
You are.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lipton?
I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. That takes us to our next agenda item this evening. And so we are moving to item C on the consent agenda. And so Councilmember Fahey, I'll turn it over to you to introduce the item.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, so this was the Older Americans Month proclamation. And I just wanted to first comment that I was very happy to see in the EDI discussion earlier that they are considering age as one of the issues that will be dealt with in the EDI program. There are several ways in which the older community is discriminated against. And this proclamation, I think, shows that we're trying, at least trying not to discriminate against people because of their age. And I just want to be sure everyone was aware that we have these good intentions. So, thank you.
Thank you. And so I had it pulled up and then I moved my screen. And so with that, I will read our Older Americans Month proclamation. It's May 2021. Whereas Louisville includes a growing number of older Americans who have built resilience and strength over their lives and successes and difficulties. And whereas Louisville benefits when people of all ages, abilities and backgrounds are included and encouraged to share their success stories of resilience. And whereas Louisville residents have come together during this difficult time to protect people of all ages and we, as we fight this pandemic together. And whereas Louisville recognizes our need to nurture ourselves, reinforce our strength and continue to thrive in times of both joy and difficulty. And whereas Louisville fosters a community of strength by creating opportunities to share stories and learn from each other. Engaging older adults through programming and supporting, that supports physical, mental and social and emotional well-being. And encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and resilience of our beautiful community. And whereas Louisville celebrates the strength and wisdom of our older adults, emphasis on the power of connection engagement in building strong communities. Now therefore, I, Ashley Stolzman, Mayor of Louisville, Colorado, do hereby proclaim May 2021 to be Older Americans Month. They urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential valuable members of our community. It's stated this fourth day of May 2021. Thank you, everyone. And so that takes us to our next order of business, but I'll just ask folks if anyone needs a brief recess before we continue.
Okay, could I ask for a clarification? On the previous item, younger passes. Where, could you kind of like review the bidding in terms of what the process is going to be? I don't think we've agreed on the number of underpasses, the amount of contributions that we're getting from existing resources. So did we agree to, you know, kick that to the next meeting or next discussion? Where are we on that?
Could you just make a motion to reconsider the transportation tax, just to take us back to that agenda item because we did move past it?
Okay, I'll move to reconsider the transportation tax.
Second, is, second, all those in favor, please say aye. Thank you. So we're just reopening to confirm where we are moving forward. And so my understanding of where we are is that in early June, we're going to have a discussion where Director Core brings back some costs. And at that meeting, we'll prioritize the underpasses in order from one to six and determine if any are not feasible at that time or if there's not consensus to move forward with any at that time. So that's where we'll have that discussion. And as soon as possible, the city manager and the Economic Vitality Director will schedule a joint meeting with the Revitalization Commission and us to determine if there's interest from the Revitalization Commission in participating on the project. So that'll help answer that question. And so then following that meeting in June, that's where we will understand if we're moving forward with only internal sources of funding or if we're using the combination of intern and new funding sources. That's my understanding of the discussion.
So it will be at that meeting. We're going to have one meeting in June to talk about this, right?
The, the LRC meeting is one meeting, which it's not clear to me whether it will be in May or June. And it's not important to set that because we don't know, the city manager will work the appropriate timeline out. And the other meeting will be in June and it'll be around the project costs that Kurt's going to put together for us and the updated budget numbers that we have, if they're available at that time. And that's where we'll discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, this is Heather. I would just add that, you know, again, we're planning to have the updated fund balances when we have the budget amendment. So, so I, I'm not sure it's going to coincide directly with the conversation on design. So I just, I just want to let folks know that. This is all moving really quickly. And so we're trying to make sure we provide good and accurate information in a timely manner, recognizing that we, we still need to understand what that information is and gather that.
Councilmember Lipton, does that make sense?
No, it makes total sense. I think the, the takeaway is that we, we need all of the information to make some final decisions. So whether they come in the same meeting or, you know, shortly thereafter, we need all that information. So we need project scope and project financing.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. Any other discussion of this agenda item? All right, seeing that, we've completed the next agenda item and that would take us to our next agenda item, which is agenda item C. And I just was asking if folks need to take any kind of a break before we move on. All right, we will, it is 10:00 PM. We will take a five-minute break and we are going to continue on. So we will give him one more minute. So we are past our break time with someone on Councilline text messaging Councilmember Dickinson, just to make sure he's not having a connection problem. Oh, here he is. Perfect. He's not.
There, there is a line at the restroom.
Sorry about that, Councilmember Dickinson. I just didn't want to lose you for a connection issue. So thank you, everyone. We're welcome back to the City Council meeting. Everybody had a good break, so we'll have high energy again after the break. That's fantastic. And that brings us to our next agenda item, which is Discussion Direction, Business Representation for the Economic Vitality Committee. And so Megan Pierce will take us through a staff presentation. Hi, Megan.
Good evening again. Okay, so I have a very brief presentation. This just covers what was in your agenda materials, which is really sort of context and background dating back to November of last year when we adopted the Economic Vitality Strategic Plan. Give me just a second. The, the closed caption is interfering with hitting my slide advance. So try again here. Okay, sorry about that. So, um, background. So, starting back in November, we adopted the Economic Vitality Strategic Plan. There was an initial conversation among council about how the continuation of the Economic Vitality Committee interacted with the ongoing role of the Business Retention and Development, the Brad Committee. So on the recommendation of the Economic Vitality Committee, after several months of, of discussion and review, council voted to dissolve Brad in, in February of this year. The ongoing discussion has centered then on what, what shape the Economic Vitality Committee takes. And, and those discussions leading up to February, a lot of concern about how the voice of the business community would be diminished if Brad were dissolved. And there was nothing put in its place or no alternative for business members to participate and especially to interact directly with the council. The, so the Economic Vitality Committee's recommendation was to dissolve Brad, but there was thought to an alternative structure. To be clear, that was not part of the resolution that you adopted in February. It was mentioned in the agenda materials. Some desire about adding non-voting business members to EBC, but we did not make that part of the formal action. Those discussions were still ongoing and those discussions have now continued since February on the committee. It appears, I, I think I'm interpreting this correctly, but I question myself these days that there's general consensus to have the importance of having a variety of business perspectives and that businesses have a voice and an ability to participate in city policymaking. I think it's the specific mechanics of how that occurs that gets into what has occurred most recently at EBC. So at the April 16th meeting, two members voted in favor of adding four non-voting business members, representing the business community to representing the business community to the Economic Vitality Committee, which is currently just a three-member council committee. One member of the EBC does not support this recommendation. The specifics haven't been outlined because we still don't, you know, we do not have consensus of the, of the three members. But if council can, you know, concurred with the recommendation that's before you this evening, we would envision there'd be a process to recruit and propose those four additional members. Any recommended members would need to be approved by city council, consistent with your normal board and commission appointment process. So, you know, envision an application, interview, recommendation, appointment type process. If, if this is the direction we are to go. The committee does not have a recommendation on how it would necessarily incorporate specific input from the Downtown Business Association or the Louisville Chamber of Commerce. We've had several discussions about those being additional members, but maybe a different type of member with those groups appointing maybe their own representatives to attend EBC meetings. But again, to be clear, there's, there's not consensus on that. So I'm not presenting a recommendation on that specifics tonight. And then just one thing to call out, there was an item that was missed in the agenda packet that was included in tonight's addendum. It was information circulated by Mayor Protem Maloney, I believe, ahead of our March EBC meeting, making some suggestions related to business, business perspectives that would need to be vocalized or considered in terms of some of our specific strategic plan initiatives for 2021. So those materials are available for the public and those who hadn't seen them previously. And then the action requested tonight is that the majority of the Economic Vitality Committee recommends adding four non-voting business members to the committee in addition to the three appointed council members. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Pierce. And that takes us to our public comment on this agenda item. And Mark, I thank you very much for staying with us. We've got a lot to talk about tonight. And I, I hope you found it interesting and this will turn us over our public comment period so you can tell us whatever you'd like to tell us.
Thank you. I did find some of it interesting and, you know, got through the rest. Mark Overholzer, 224 Hoover Avenue, also the former chair of the former Business Retention Development Committee. So I can't stress enough the importance of the business voice and local government. And ever since Brad was dissolved, there's been no official conduit for these discussions. Businesses have a very unique, a unique perspective, a unique issues. And council needs to have a deep understanding of how their decisions would affect businesses. And then information can really only come from the businesses themselves. It can only come through a meaningful back and forth conversation, not a three-minute, one-sided statement like I'm making right now, trying to anticipate what might be discussed later, having no chance to shed any light on, on later discussions or rebut or correct statements that, that council members might make. So that back and forth is important. So adding, adding business members to the EBC, I believe, accomplishes all of these things. So I would urge you to approve such a thing. And I also wanted to try to address some of the proposal, or the proposal that Mayor Protem Maloney has been discussing in the EBC meetings, which he would like to call business members as needed for particular issues as they come up. I certainly appreciate the sentiment behind this and I agree with what he's trying to do. But I don't see this working in the real world and historically it has proven out that this doesn't happen. I was chair of the Brad Committee for, I believe, five years and to the best of my recollection, we were only asked for our opinion once on an issue. And, and that was a body that existed specifically for that purpose. So if no body exists, I hesitate to see how that might actually be done in practicality. So I would urge you to approve the plan of having specific sitting members added to the EBC rather than people who are called up as needed. And the other aspect I wanted to discuss was the role of the DBA and the chamber. And I do think it would be incumbent upon those bodies to send representatives to the EBC meetings. But if they're not official members, I want to make sure that they've got some sort of mechanism so that they can participate in the discussion in a meaningful way, rather than being limited to the strict rules of, of public comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Any, any other members? And seeing none, that takes us over to council member discussion on the topic. Any discussion from council members? Councilmember Lay.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time finding my hands up. I, I think, I think what the director said earlier is really important. I, which is to say, I think there's certainly was broad consensus, in my view, on the EBC about the importance of exchange of information between the business community and business stakeholders and the council and the importance of council sharing information with the business community. You know, in advance of decisions being made. I also think that there is pretty broad consensus about the need to involve particular members of the business community who might have expertise and narrow, you know, sort of very, very targeted knowledge about a certain issue that might come before the EBC. The question that I, I guess I would, I would frame the, the discussion about this issue because I presume that there will be a number of different views probably expressed is more, how do we do this? And how do we do this well? And I guess I have a couple of thoughts about that and particularly why it, I think it's a good idea to have not just the folks who have particular expertise on a given issue come in and assist us, but that we have an ongoing group of, of folks that this council would ultimately select in a, in an application process that is, is somewhat similar to what we do in, with respect to other other boards and commissions. It's really important and one of the things that I think we, we also, I forgot to say, I think there's broad consensus around the need to be nimble on our committee. And I think that's one of the reasons why nobody's talking about expanding the voting numbers of the EDC. I, I think we, we've already been through that and I think we know that that's, that's the deal. I, I, but I think there's a couple of values that get met by having non-voting members. I think one of them is that we, I think it's important to main, we, we on other committees and commissions and boards, we often will get real experts in, who serve for a period of time. They don't know everything about every issue that comes before that area or that commission, I think of, of the historical commission or of the historical preservation commission, for example. But, you know, where we get people with particular expertise, but that we, one, get consistent participation of business people who are very tied into the business community here, who can help the EDC to analyze the strategic issues that we are going to be dealing with under the strategic plan, the EDC plan. And that that continuity matters. It matters for, for us to be able to evaluate information that we're exchanging. It's also, I think, a matter, a second of, of maintaining a credibility with the business community so that when we do seek information, there is a, a solid basis for understanding that on, ongoing we care and are involving on a month-to-month basis, or however long, you know, often we meet, members of that community. Again, not exclusive of bringing in other folks. It is a both and, not, not the other way around. And having that continuity, I think, can be very helpful. I think it can help to build those relationships. I think those, those extra four, for example, can help us to reach out to the people that we need to have involved in the conversations about the very specific issues that we need experts. So at any rate, that's, those are, you know, it, basically the, the reasons that I, I think that this proposal is, is, is it the only way to do it? No, but I think in echoing what Mark Overholzer said just a minute ago, I think, I think not having an ongoing structure does inhibit the building of that relationship and the use of the expertise to evaluate the information that's coming to us. And to be able to say, hey, this is coming up, you should, you know, you should get out there and provide that information to these people you may not have thought about. And I, I think that synergy between staff and EDC and those people on the committee, plus the others that all of us can then link to could be really useful. So that's, that's kind of my own thinking. I know the chair has his, his views of this too and, and probably clearly council member Maloney does as well. So I'll, I'll defer.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks. Councilmember Lay, I thought, I think you said a lot of that really well. You know, I bring, you know, one of our, the strategic goal, number two of the Economic Vitality Strategic Plan is to improve our business climate through collaborative relationships and effective processes, right? And so I think part of what I'm, you know, what we're trying to establish, well, and, and within that strategic plan, Brad is assigned to some responsibilities of things that Brad is supposed to be doing and Brad doesn't exist anymore. So one of the things that the EBC is doing is trying to figure out how to replace Brad and how to continue those relationships with the business community. And I think what we were trying to do, and I know one of the main goals of, of getting rid of Brad was to help our director of economic vitality not have, you know, meetings, two meetings that were basically kind of trying to accomplish the same thing. So instead of having an EBC meeting and a Brad meeting and, and trying to figure out who does what, let's streamline things and get rid of Brad, but bring that business voice to EBC in some way, shape or form. And it is complicated and I don't know that there's a perfect way to do it. And I certainly don't pretend that we found the perfect way to do it. But I think that's the intention, right? The intention is that we're not, you know, entirely ending all official roles of the business community in our, in our, in our city. And just like, like councilmember Lay said, you know, we have a sustainability advisory board. We, we have experts that help us and advise us and really think hard about these topics. And of course, the business community will be thinking hard about business topics and council may or may not agree with their perspective on something as, as they'll be tilting in that direction. But it's a good voice to, to hear. And so, you know, I think in our conversations, I, I love everything that council member Maloney has put forward in, in ideas of, you know, bringing in experts for specific things. And, and he, you know, talked about, if you look at the strategic plan and the timing of things, man, we could really use specific experts for specific moments. And I think that's fantastic. I don't, I don't argue with any of that. I really think it's important to bring in the right voices at the right time. And so I hope we do that regardless of what we decide today. Whether we decide to put people on the EBC or not, I hope that we follow through with council member Maloney or Mayor Protem Maloney's ideas of really trying to engage specific, the right specific people at the right time. But just, just like the sustainability board at HPC, we, we want people that come every month that understand the pattern of what we're doing and, and the process and the timing and the work plan. And they can contribute in their own unique way to each conversation. And while they may not be experts in any one given thing, or, or they are in one, but not another, their voice is important and our connection with them is important and our relationship with them is important. And I think one thing that Mark Overholzer brought up was something I'm aware of is best intentions are that we will go to the business community and, and really seek out their opinion on things and their expertise on some, some things that we're moving forward on. But in our attempt to be nimble, I don't think we do that because we, it, it takes a really long time. If you're going to delay a decision in order to engage certain people, that, that takes staff time to engage them. It takes staff time to bring them in. It delays the process as we have that conversation and organize them and have it and then move forward. And so if we want to make quick decisions, it's going to be very difficult. We'll have to be thinking months and months ahead. And then we didn't save Megan any, sorry, Director Pierce, any bandwidth because now she's going out to try to convince a handful of people that have never been involved to be involved for this one conversation. And I hope she's successful, but that's a lot of work. And, and I don't know how much effort council is going to put into seeking out that information if we, if, like he said, we didn't seek it out from our existing Brad. So, you know, I think, I think it's really important to have something that is consistent and reliable and sends a message that there's a connection, albeit just with the EBC, but there's a connection between the business community and their voice and the city council and our policymaking. And that they can have a seat at the table to have a conversation. And I think what we came up with, with the non-voting member piece was that we didn't want to confuse their power. We just wanted them to be a, a real part of the conversation. But even the vote at the EBC, which is in binding, it still goes to council. That's a council vote. It's a council vote of three. And so we're going to take that opinion in at the meetings, but we're still going to vote as a group of three and send that to council to vote as a group of seven. And so it's only a voice. It is not a deciding factor and they can't outvote council. And so I think that was a lot of the intention with the design of four non-voting members was to make sure they're included, make sure they have a voice, make sure council still has the nimbleness to act quickly and make a decision and bring it back to, well, the council committee does, and then to bring it back to the full council. So, you know, obviously we've been working on this for a long time, maybe six months. So if there are any questions you have for me or for Megan, I'm happy to answer those too as we move forward.
Thanks, councilmember Dickinson. And councilmember Lipton, you had your hand up next, but if it'd be all right with you, I'd like to go to Mayor Protem Maloney because he's on the committee. Thank you. Mayor Protem Maloney. Just to round out the committee members.
I, I, I was fine with councillor Lipton going next.
If it, I'm happy to go whichever order you wanted. I didn't want to shortchange you as the, the committee member.
I, I don't feel shortchanged, but now I've got the, the mic, I'll just keep it. You know, I don't take this lightly. And I was part of three generations of Brad's. And so, you know, when I got on council in 2015, that was one of my assignments I got. And, and so I've seen generations of Brad. And, you know, it, it was by virtue of where you stood if you were on Brad or not. So if you were the chair, chair of the LRC, you're on Brad. If you were a chair of planning and commission or, you know, chamber, whatever it might be. And it wa, it was something that was created 2007-ish with the idea that we really were going to address business retention and development. So I think it was done with good intention. What we found though is it just didn't really function very well. And so we went through a couple of different generations and, you know, this, this winter, we voted, I believe, 7-0. I could be corrected on that to dissolve Brad. And I guess some of us had in mind that we were going to maybe try to get the best parts of Brad and bring that along as part of the EBC. I'm not sure what those were. The, the current EBC and, and, you know, agility, flexibility, speed can be good things and it can be bad things. And, you know, I, I appreciate, you know, we will be making, you know, I mean, the assumption is we won't have any business input. And I guess I, I'm taken back by the assumption is we won't have any business input. And I guess I, I'm taken back by that because back in March, I sent a letter to all those, all the councillors. And I said, I took the Economic Vitality Strategic Plan and went through every item. And, but you know, the power of the strategic plan, it's the first time I've been on council that we've actually had the policymakers agreeing with the operational direction of economic development slash vitality. I think that's terrific. And in doing so, uh, not only do we have these, these, uh, goals and, um, you know, the supporting actions for those, but for each of those supporting actions, we have target dates. Um, and, you know, so I took that and said, okay, well, where are some of these things that the policymakers would benefit from having business input? And I noted those things on there. So you know, the business scorecard, you know, what's, what's the cost of doing business in Lewisville? Um, what should the BAT program look like? Some of those things, I absolutely believe that we need business input on those things. So it's not my intention to say I don't want business input, it's to say to get it when it's appropriate. And I do believe we could recruit people to do that. I know members of Brad who dropped off over time, who are important business people in this town, that it was just too much of a commitment without any payback. If we give them, uh, an idea that we want you to help us formulate this kind of policy on BAPS, for example, I do think we would get a lot of interest. You know, we've had, we've had businesses in towns who received them, or businesses in town who signed their lease before they realized that, you know, that would take them out of the running for that. So I believe business voice is important. Um, I think we need to be clear, though. What was proposed at EVC was four non-voting members plus a DBA member and plus Chamber. So we're really talking about six. And so, you know, Chris made a face, so maybe I'm wrong about that, but four or six, I, I, I just don't think it, it really takes advantage of the flexibility that we experienced during 2020. We did a number of really important things, I think, as a, um, a committee. Um, you know, we were able to be very quick on things, and the business community was there. Mark was there. He voiced his opinion on, you know, what we should do about this program or that program. And that did help shape what we came out with. Um, but we were able to do it relatively quickly. But I believe targeted business input um, is really important. And I believe it, it's something, we have a framework, we have a plan. Um, it's not like we're going to go, okay, next month, we need these people. It's in the fall, we're going to be looking at the BAT program, and so we need to recruit people to do this. And, and with, well, I mean, that's my opinion. That's where I've been coming from. I've been, I believe, very consistent in that opinion for the last six months, and part of it is my experience with the three generations of Brad. And then my experience with really what I think was a successful Economic Vitality Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Lay, if you have just a clarif- a brief clarification, and then it's Councilmember Lipton's turn. You're muted. You're muted.
I'm sorry if I made a face, uh, of, uh, Mayor Proton. Um, I, what I'm recalling from the EVC meeting was actually, when we made the motion to have four non-voting members, I believe the chair made a, um, friendly amendment or asked for a friendly amendment to add the two organizations, the DBA and, and, um, uh, the Chamber as members. And I had moved and, and didn't agree with that, and then we voted on it without that. I think the idea, at least as I mentioned it, and, and before we made the final recommendation or vote for on the recommendation, was that it, essentially, the DBA and the Chamber would come anyway. That's just because of their sort of general interest. We didn't need to make the members, doesn't mean that they won't have input or anything like that. It's just that they would, they would be there anyway. And, you know, that, who knows what kind of other business organizations might participate in the future? Do we want to pick those two? Probably not. So that, I think that's, I mean, you can tell me if that jars your, your memory a little bit, but.
Oh, thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Lipton.
Well, it is getting late, and I'm not sure, um, this is the best time for us to be taking this on, to be honest. But my, my thinking going into this is we created the EVC as a committee of the city council. It's the same kind of structure we had with other city council committees. Whether it's a finance committee or, uh, utilities committee or whatever, we wanted small groups and it's supposed to be of the policymakers, which are city council members. So I'm not sure now if this is a committee. Is it a board? Is it a commission? Or what, what is it? What we're, what are we trying to do? And I don't disagree that we do need significant input and participation by the business community in this, whatever it turns out to be. But I don't think it's really a city council committee right now, at least the way we have typically looked at city council committees. Something else. And I don't know what that is now, because I'm not sure, and it's not in the report, what, you know, the, basically, the charter is of the EVC going forward after adding these people. I also say, I was on, I was on the Brad, on Brad, oh gosh, it was my first three years, and suffered enormously. It was, it was, uh, I wouldn't call it a dysfunctional group, but it was a very non-productive group. And I think part of it was people brought their parochial interest every meeting and advocating those parochial interests. And it wasn't, people were not necessarily selected by virtue of their knowledge or what they might contribute. It was in part by virtue of their position on some other committee or some other board or, you know, nonprofit. So I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether this is the best approach, or if there are other approaches, or if Maloney's approach is better. But I, I do have some discomfort. This just seems like we're going back in time. It would be nice to be able to do some kind of just-in-time, um, community engagement with the business community in particular, as it relates economic development. And just by appointing more people, awarding more people on a committee or board, or whatever you want to call it, and it's the same people advocating their interests, I'm not sure it's going to get us to where we want to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. So I think to frame the discussion, it would be helpful if someone could make a motion. Mayor Proton Maloney, would you do that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to leave the structure of the EVC meeting as it is. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So further debate of the motion, I'll add my comments to the conversation at this point. I think we all agree that engagement in the business community is a critical function of the EVC. And I think the debate is just the tactical approach to how that is done. And I think there's just trust that I could hear from some members, whether that'll be done or not, if it is a council committee as it currently is. But I think that that is exactly the charge that we've put, and I, I don't see Councilmember Dickinson, Councilmember Lay, or Mayor Proton Maloney shying away from that engagement charge that we've put forward. Like, we have to do that. And in my course of time on council, there have been members of the business community that have been sorely underrepresented on the Brad. There are minority business owners, there are communities of color, there are women-owned businesses that have been largely left out of a lot of the conversations. And we need to do a better job engaging everyone. And so to me, it's not about engaging four people that are experts. It's like, we need to find out more from everyone. And sometimes it's a, a two-way communication gap. Like, sometimes we need to communicate information out about things that are coming. Sometimes we need to seek information. And so we, we, we need to rely on our staff as the experts. I, I continue to hear people say, we're going to have these community members as experts. And like, on the Sustainability Board, we have a staff member that's the expert. We have community members that tell us all of the community input we want. Um, but we've hired professional staff to be the experts for things, like Megan Pierce is our expert. And she can help us get whatever expertise she has, and then she knows when she doesn't have expertise and can hire consultants and can she, like, we pay experts to do expert work, and we need the input and opinions of all of the business community and all of the other community members as well. So to me, that is the charge of the council committee. We have a strategic plan. I'm very, I'm confident that the council committee we have is the right one, and that they can carry it out. And I look forward to seeing the great work from the committee. Councilmember Dickinson?
Uh, thank you. I, I think, you know, I don't know if there's a more important moment to be engaging the business community than right now, in that, do you want to be engaged? And how do you want to be engaged? And in this moment of deciding how we engage the business community, there's zero outreach to the business community about how to engage with the business community. So if we're not going to reach out to them about a topic this important, what is the likelihood we reach out to them about a BAT program? Or something else? We're not even reaching out to them about whether they want to be engaged in being engaged. And we're going to pretend that we're going to reach out to them about a specific topic. I just don't think that's going to happen. And if that happens, great. And as I keep saying, we can do that. And we can have consistent members that can give us some insight on the community, the business community, why people come, why they don't come, what the rental rates are, and why they choose different incentive programs in different cities, all these different things. We can ask them these questions. Um, as, you know, like, what is, what is hiring look like right now? What does employment look like? What are the effective taxes on your, like, if we have business professionals that are talking to us regularly, we can ask them lots of questions, and they can be good insights. And when we want to get specific experts on a specific topic, having members that are consistent members of the EVC help us go find those people will be hugely important. Um, and so I'm just, I, all I'm saying is I don't like our chances of following through on this promise when we're not, when we haven't proved that we will do that. We have not engaged the business community. Um, we haven't engaged Brad, and we haven't even engaged the business community about this discussion. We have one member of the business community on the call right now. And so I just, I don't see that as something we're doing. And of course, Mayor, you're right. I will do the best I can. I have conversations with business people all the time. And as an individual, I'll do my best to get more people to meetings than just Mark Oberholzer. Um, but I'm, I'm just one council member. So I'll, I'll do my best to do that, you know, moving forward.
Councilmember Dickinson, I'm not, I don't want to say I'm offended. I, I'm confused, I guess, is what I am. Is the way to describe it. Like, I don't believe that you didn't reach out to anyone in advance on this discussion. Like, I, I don't believe that you came here without having talked to any other business members about what representation they wanted. Like, that is surprising to me. I talked to business owners about this discussion. Did I talk to everyone? No. Was there a coordinated engagement strategy? No. And we should do better at that. That is something the EVC is working on, is coordinated engagement strategy. But that doesn't mean that no one reached out to businesses. Like, I know you talked to people. And I know business owners were at the previous vitality committee meetings about this topic because it's in the meeting minutes. And I know that they were at previous council meetings about this topic because I listened to them and I heard them. And so it's not just the community meetings, but it's also individual council members reaching out to their constituencies. And that's the same, I mean, we're going to talk about building height next. And that's a super important thing to members of the community that if, you know, we've talked about for years and years with different people, just because no one happens to be here tonight, doesn't mean there's been no communication or outreach, or, I mean, there's not been coordinated outreach on the building height thing that's coming up. But have constituencies talked to different council members over the years, and has it been coordinated? So I just, I guess I'm confused by the comment that no one talked to businesses, because I know I talked to businesses about this, and I'm confident that you did too. And so I just am confused, I guess.
Well, I, I apologize if there's hyperbole, because of course, no one and nothing, like, those words don't make sense ever. So I apologize if there's hyperbole there, but certainly I don't think there is, as you pointed out, a concerted effort to consistently engage the business community in the conversation. That's my concern. And that I, I don't think that I've seen that, and I don't think we'll have a ton of success if that's the strategy. And that's, that's, that's all.
Councilmember Lay?
Um, yeah, I guess, I, I would, I would echo, uh, somewhat Councilmember Dickinson says. I, I think one way of thinking about this is that this is, it is an important moment. Um, and it's an important moment that count, council has made this an absolutely top priority. One of the, one of the most important priorities that we have. And I think we need all the help we can get. Yes, we do have, uh, we do have the director, and she's terrific. Um, and we've got, you know, we've got good, good council members, I think, on the, on the committee. I, I, no question about that. Um, but I think i- and, and, and it is a council, you know, it's to get information to council to make good decisions that have a, a good basis, um, uh, and a, and good support, uh, from a business standpoint. And getting all that is really important. But we're government. We're not, most of us on the, on the council are not doing business day in, day out. I serve businesses. I am a small business. Caleb, uh, more so, but the rest of us in council are not that way. And, and that's, I think, important. It's, it's, and it's not denigrating anything. It's suggesting that people who are in it, day in and day out, have something to offer us on something that we all agree is really important. And not just that. This isn't a day-to-day thing. This is a committee, our, our council committee is there to execute on a strategic plan. And having ongoing relationships and an expectation of that continued relationship, an institutional memory about how this um, plan is unfolding and the decisions that have been made. Uh, we need that kind of input. And I, um, and everything that we've said about, um, about council being the decision-maker, absolutely, on, on everything, absolutely. But why would, when we have already received interest from the business community and having this sort of arrangement, why wouldn't we embrace that? What, what's the downside? I mean, I, I just don't see any downside of this. And I see a lot from, again, not from our perspective only. I do see the advantage of it from our perspective, but in terms of building credibility and in terms of the, the business community seeing that this is a council that has a committee that is drawing directly every single time they meet on the expertise of people who understand and are, um, are going to be able to helpfully uh, process with us that information that we are going to go and seek in, in a variety of ways from that community. We can analyze it, of course we can. The director can analyze it, of course she can. But why wouldn't we draw on that additional expertise? And I'm not convinced, and I think this is just a different gloss on what uh, I think the chair of our committee, the Councilmember Dickinson, is saying is don't we stand a better chance of doing a better job at executing that, um, that strategic plan if we have those folks on board? And so, you know, for if we have those folks on board? And so, you know, for that reason, I'm going to offer a, I'm going to offer a substitute motion that is the recommendation that we, we have four members, non-voting members that are chosen by, ultimately by the council through an application process of what I would, I guess, term, you know, business people who can assist us with that process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So just, so everybody understands the procedure, we'll vote on the substitute motion first. And so we're now debating the substitute motion.
Can someone offer a substitute motion to the substitute motion?
Um, I believe our rules do allow that. And we'll ask the City Attorney Kelly, if you can confirm whether or not someone can offer another substitute motion on top of it. And I think at some point, it is worth just voting on some of these things. But City Attorney Kelly, do our rules allow for another substitute motion?
Uh, Mayor, I'm not sure that the rules get that specific. As presiding officer, certainly you have some leeway to allow or someone can call for the question as well.
Well, you might offer a friendly amendment, or perhaps we just debate this a bit more. People have each had a turn, except Councilmember Fahey. So I would like to give her a turn. Um, she was the next person I was going to call on, and then I'll, she's the next person in the queue and hasn't had a chance to talk. And then we'll come to you for whatever substitute motion you'd like to make. Or, or friendly amendment or additional comment.
I would like to call the motion.
Um, I...
And I'll defer to Councilmember Fahey first.
And if you could wait for Councilmember Fahey, he hasn't had a chance to talk. It's that we call the question. Thank you. Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be short. I just wanted to say that the Economic Vitality Committee, as it exists today, with just the three members of council, has done an amazing job in less than a year, and has come up with a whole vitality plan, and taken many steps to increase the vitality of the city. I think that they are capable now of spending that same time and effort in actually promoting the vitality with the business community. And I'm not so sure that they need to have signed business members on the board.
Thank you. So just so everyone's clear, we're voting now on the question, which is, should, the motion is to have four additional ex officio members added to the Economic Vitality Committee that would be appointed by council. City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call on the vote?
Councilmember Littin?
No.
Councilmember Fahey?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
No.
Councilmember Littin?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
No. So that takes us to the original motion that leaves the Economic Vitality Committee as a council committee of three, and...
So this, this is where I'd like to offer a substitute motion?
Councilmember Littin, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure this is the best time to be addressing this. And I think it needs more work by the EBC. So I was going to suggest a substitute motion, you hand this back to the EBC before taking a vote. Bring it back to a date certain, back to the full council, after they make a revised recommendation.
Um, so the motioner was Mayor Proton Maloney?
Um...
I'm sorry, Councilmember Littin, were you offering a substitute motion or a friendly amendment? I apologize.
I was doing a substitute motion.
Okay, is there a second? All right, so that proposal dies for a length of a second.
Okay.
Thank you. And so that takes us back to our, uh, motion that was on the floor that I stated. Is there any confusion about the motion on the floor? In that City Clerk?
No, I, I think, well, we should have some, some discussion. My concern with the motion as it stands now is it creates a vacuum. We really don't have direction to give back to the EBC. We don't necessarily agree with the recommendation, but we're not giving them feedback. And this is why I just wanted to table it to another meeting. And, and then be able to have them provide some maybe new recommendations that we could consider.
So Councilmember Littin, this discussion has taken up a tremendous amount of Economic Vitality Committee bandwidth, so that they haven't been able to move on to the Economic Vitality Strategic Plan. So that's why I didn't second your motion. I think it's important that we give them direction tonight. And I think it is very clear that the committee will exist as a council committee and start working on the strategic plan, which includes engaging with the business community. And so I, I think that that's an important charge of determining the best ways to get more broad engagement. And I think there was, everyone I heard tonight say that they agreed with Mayor Proton Maloney's proposal to bring people in. I heard a lot of agreement around doing more outreach about one topics are coming up and communicating. So I think I would leave it to the committee to figure out the engagement strategy going forward. But I, I mean, I think the question needs to be, that's why I didn't second your motion. I think this, the question of the committee structure needs to be resolved, so the committee can move forward and get to work. Is there any other debate of the motion, Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I mean, the, the committee voted that the way we would have outreach is to have members on the board. So that clearly has been denied. So we will attempt a different strategy, like, you know, to, in all respect to Councilmember Fahey, as the chair of the EBC, that's what we needed to engage with our business community. So when you say, you don't think we need that, but we are telling you, we need that. So we will now attempt a different strategy to engage the business community for each individual topic instead of at a holistic engagement way. So that's, that's what I understand as the direction, uh, Councilmember Littin, is I think we have clear direction, um, that we will not be changing the formation of the EBC. And we will instead be using Director Pearson, my time, to engage business members individually consistently.
Seeing no other hands, could we please have a roll call on the motion?
Councilmember Littin?
I'm going to pass for the moment.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Littin?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That ended the discussion.
Oh, I was going to pass till the end. I, I'm, I'm going to...
Councilmember Littin, that's not how the roll call voting works. So you'll just be marked as absent for that vote or abstaining. So that takes us to our next agenda item.
Excuse me? Can I?
No.
I mean, we do the roll call, though, I mean, I think we should take this up under a rules discussion at a later day, but we have always done roll call for people.
Except Alex.
That takes us to our next agenda this evening, which is ordinance 1807, series 2021, and ordinance amending chapter 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning building height calculations ordinance. So our second reading in public hearing. I'll ask for any disclosures. And seeing none, I'll ask Directors Zakaro if there is a path forward where we could continue this to a date certain, given that it's an ordinance and that it's 10:58 PM. And I'm not sure that the group has the full enthusiasm we would like to have for this discussion.
Sure, you, I think you can continue the hearing to a date certain. There's no compelling time issue that I'm aware of. So whatever works for council schedule, just to continue this to the next meeting, next regular meeting or a different meeting, it's fine.
Um, so if there's no objection from folks, I would move, we continue this item to May 24th, uh, to May 18th. And City Attorney Kelly, is there any particular procedural thing that I need to do in addition to what I've said?
Um, no.
Thank you. Is there any debate of the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries, which takes us to our city attorney's reports.
Um, thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I have to report this evening is, at the last meeting, after we came out of executive session, I advised the board that we had on the advanced agenda, the city manager's amended agreement would come before city council on June 1st, and wanted to let council know that we are trying to get that agreement on for your May 18th meeting instead. So you may see that a bit earlier.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly. And that takes us to our committee reports and identification of future agenda items. If there are any pressing committee reports, please give them now, otherwise we'll save them for the next meeting. And the only thing I'll report, I'm aware of two proclamations that have been requested or that are in the pipeline. And there are proclamations we've done in the past. One is recognizing gun violence awareness stay on June 4th, that the Moms Demand Action Group in, in the county would like us to do. And so we'll put that on the advanced agenda. And the other that I'm aware of is council members working on a Pride Month proclamation like we've done in the past. So I just wanted to bring those up and see if there's any concern with adding those to a future agenda. Seeing none, any other future agenda items or committee reports that are pressing this evening that need to be presented? All right. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.